This is the September fourteenth City Council meeting. We appreciate your presence. I will tell you, we're having a little bit of, you folks will never know it, but we're having a little bit of technical difficulties. So, we're beginning the meeting, although the first portion will not be streamed live. So, we, as soon as we get those, those technical issues handled, we will be back on the air. And hopefully, they'll be able to, trust me, they rerun this show enough where you will see more than you wanted. I apologize. We are going to begin this meeting as we do all our meetings, that's by asking for God's presence over what we do. And really excited to have Dr. Adrian McGee Burgess from the road, from St. Mary's Road, UMC. Welcome Pastor.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Let us pray. Oh gracious God, too often you are more eager to hear from us than we are eager to pray. We ask you now, on behalf of the leaders and servants of this great city of Columbus, to grant us a portion of your wisdom, compassion, justness, mercy, and grace. From self-righteousness that will not compromise, or from selfishness that gains by the oppression of others, oh Lord, deliver us. From the lust of money or power that drives to destroy, oh Lord, deliver us. From trusting in weapons of division, or mistrusting to offers of peace, oh Lord, deliver us. From hearing, believing, or speaking lies about others we do not understand, oh Lord, deliver us. From suspicions or fear that stands in the way of progress or prosperity, oh Lord, deliver us. From words and deeds that encourage discord, prejudice, and hatred, from everything that prevents us from fulfilling your promise of peace, oh Lord, deliver us. Lord, we thank you for the sacred duty of service to others, and God bless the work of the council today. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Burgess, thank you so much for, for joining us this morning, and please thank you Church for sharing you with us. And I do want to thank you again for the many ways that the, that your church gets involved in the community. I know you had a vaccination clinic at your church that I was privileged to attend, and man, I'm telling you, you guys had them, had them moving through there. It was a model of efficiency, but thank you for what you do for the citizens of Columbus. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
(Inaudible)
Counselor Huff.
Dr. Burgess, good morning. I just wanted to say it's good to see you again, and to let everyone know that this is the way we met, behind a mask, and we've been behind a mask since I met you. So, your prayer this morning is right on point. So, Lord, deliver us from what we're going through to get us back to some form of normality, so that we may get together and reach out and help each other again. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion from the Mayor pro tem, second from Counselor Huff. Are there any edits or any questions about the minutes from August thirty-first council meeting? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Quick update on COVID-19, it's, I think the most succinct way to say it is, it's still here, and doesn't appear to be going anywhere. It is exacting more carnage than, than initially thought it would, and, and we continue to monitor the numbers, and we do take comfort in the fact that the numbers tell us, from a trend perspective, that we have plateaued, although we've plateaued fairly high, on the new cases, and the rolling seven-day average, and the number of cases per one-hundred-thousand individuals over a two-week period, we have actually seen a little decline. But from the very beginning, the number that we have paid the closest attention to, because it's the one that represents the biggest challenge for our residents, is the hospitalizations. That's high. We are, again, plateaued, but at a level that is really stressing and stretching the capabilities of our frontline healthcare providers. They are heroes. They are doing an incredible job, but they are running from bed to bed, from ventilator to ventilator, and they're still being charged with trying to provide non-COVID-related medical care to people who come into their hospitals needing assistance. So, if you see a nurse, hug them, and tell them how much you appreciate what they're doing. And, again, when we talk about the vaccines, the positive news in this is that our daily numbers of first shots, new shots, going up. We're, we're closer to four hundred a day, and, and that's, that's good news. It's not where we need to be in order to try to accelerate us getting to herd immunity, but it is getting better. So, again, I beg you, don't listen to politicians, except when we suggest you check with your doctor. Talk to your medical provider. You already trust those individuals to prescribe medications for you and your family. Ask them. If you're healthy enough to get the shot, I pray that you will prayerfully consider doing so, because that is the primary weapon that we have, to try to prevent the spread and the, and the, and the deaths of some of the folks that are in our community. So, anyway, be vigilant, continue to wear masks. When you cannot socially distance, continue to pay attention to your personal hygiene, and, and tell a neighbor that the vaccine really does work. All right, I also wanted to mention too, on, from a good news perspective, we are in the middle of soliciting our community for people who are interested in starting a career. We have a program called Construction Ready, which is a very intensive four-week program that people will go to during those four weeks. It has a, an educational component, and it also has a practical work component. At the end of four weeks, they've got a ninety-seven percent placement rate in people in the construction industry. We had nine representatives from contractors at the, at the press release, and, and the, and they all stood up one at a time, saying that they need people. I mean, they're almost to the point where, if they can fog a mirror, they're going to give them a shot for a week, just to see if they stick. So, this is a tremendous program for those that are interested in enrolling and being, being vetted to be selected for that program. Go to constructionready.org. If you are a construction firm who is looking for employees, go to the same website, constructionready.org. They also have a portal on there for, for businesses that are looking for people. So, it's a, it's an awesome program. It's free of charge, and it, it can unlock the door for a lot of our residents that are looking for a way to be able to take care of and support their families. All right, we've got another couple of updates, but before we do that, I'm going to, I'm going to jump down a little bit to our Parks and Recreation Division. We are incredibly fortunate to have professional employees that work for the Consolidated Government, and who are recognized among their peers at being the best at what they do. So, I'm going to ask Director Holly Browder just to come up for just a quick second. I just wanted to let the public know what our folks are up to. They, the, our Therapeutics Division of our Parks and Recreation Department was the recipient of the two thousand twenty-one NAC Pro, which sta, which is the National Association of County Park and Recreation Officials. They were the winner of, or they were awarded the Removing Barriers Award for their Extraordinary News Show, and I'm going to ask them to come up as well. Join me in giving them a round of applause for the awesome job they did.
As the Mayor said, we're very fortunate to have an amazing program here in Columbus, Georgia. Obviously, when COVID changed things for us as a department, we had to get very creative very quickly. We have amazing staff. We have Brian Fisher and Carolyn Evans, who were in therapeutics at the time when this began, and they started a new program for our participants, because they're used to being on our facility every day, to interaction, the social skills, and the opportunities that exist as part of that. But of course, when we closed, that was not capable, possible any longer. So, as a result, they put together a program where our participants could still meet virtually, just like all of us have, but they could do programming in that way. And what evolved out of that was the Extraordinary News Show, which is what we were very, very, very glad, or very excited to receive this award this morning for that program. But that gave them the opportunity to have a television show where they now produce on a regular basis, and you can actually go out to our Facebook page and link to it. But they do interviews with people around the community. They produce it themselves, they do all the interviews, so it's very interesting to go out and see that, and see the take on how they interact with the community. But it did give us the opportunity to keep them engaged during the time in which we were closed unfortunately, which is a win-win for us and for our community. So, we feel very excited though, to have been the recipient. This is a national award through the National Association of County Parks and Recreation Officials, so we put our folks up against everybody else in the country, and we're number one, so thank you.
I'm just not on this.
Okay. Well, Holly, and to all of, all of you, y'all have done an incredible job. You make Columbus very, very proud, and, and we're just, you know, it's, it's, it's so refreshing to see during a period of our, a period of time when it's been as difficult as it's ever been for people to do regular things. Y'all have not only done the regular things, but you have done extraordinary things, and so we thank you for what you've done. Thank y'all. Yeah, we, do what now? Yeah, if you ca, can they share their names? Can y'all, tell us, if you would, come up to the microphone and tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Deonja Thornton.
Hi, I'm Wayne Mason.
Mr. Taylor.
I'm Dot Williams.
I'm Joyce Portis.
I'm Tal Papi.
My name's Boba, I see him.
Well, congratu, uh, forgotten one. Thank y'all for what you do, and I'm, y'all are welcome to stay there. I just wanted to mention a couple of more awards and recognitions that have been received by our, our Director Holly Browder. Holly was awarded through the same organization. She was selected as the Professional Fellow Award winner for the year of 2021, so Holly was. And she was busy, because she, she's also the President-elect of the National Association of County Park and Recreation Officials for 2021, and she is the incoming President of the Georgia Park and Recreation Association, GRPA, for 2122. And, and she's also been selected to attend the 2021 National Park Summit. There's only forty Recreation Department Heads in the country that are invited to do this. So, Holly, hope we get some work out of you in 2121. Mr. City Manager, do you want to say something to?
Mayor, I, I wish I was able to say that I'm surprised, but I'm not. You know, this is how they do it. They are recognized by those at the state level and at the, the national level, and they're just good at what they do, and so I'm not surprised, but I do want to say congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you for the leadership, and thank you for all that you do to make sure that we take care of every corner of our city, from elderly to youth to you name it, and that's what you do, and you do it well. So, congratulations and thank you.
Counselor Huff.
Director Browder, congratulations. You often mentioned to me that you are number one, and you're very proud of it. You toot your horn around Columbus, Georgia, and around the state of Georgia, and across the country. I know it's a moment for you. We don't get to recognize you and all the other employees as much as we should. Time just does not allow, but thank you for the service that you give back to us, and thank you for involving us. I go to her sometimes, and she tells me, everything's possible. I just need to see Deputy City Manager Goodwin, City Manager Isaiah Hugley, and Mayor Henderson, and we may be able to get this done. But you never say no. You never say no. There's always a possibility. Enjoyed attending the event a couple of years ago before COVID, and I think this is a conversation that we had that night, and this is a fruition of your work, and that you have risen to the top, and that we'll be hosting again, so. Thank you for all you do, and thank you to all your staff.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodson.
Yes, come on. Thank you very much. Holly, thank you very much to you and your staff. Thank you for putting us on the map. Thank your family for us, for the sacrifice you do, because day or night, you're with us, doing things in the community to help others and make it successful. Your children are right by your side, and your husband, because you're so busy always, and sometimes we take our family for granted, and they're, they're, they're your heroes, because they're right there to you. So, please thank them on behalf of us and, and the city of Columbus for allowing them to let you do what you do best. And we are very blessed to have you on our staff. Like we said before, and we don't say it enough, but you are the main person. I can call you, I text you last night at eleven-thirty, and, and you responded. That's who Holly is, and her team is the same way. You need something, and absolutely Counselor Huff was correct, you never say no. You always say, let me see what I can do, I'll get back to you. And you always come back, and you, you go not one, you don't go a hundred miles, you go two hundred miles for the citizens and for us. So, on behalf of District Seven, myself, and my family, I say congratulations to you and your family. We do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff.
Thank you, Mayor. Holly, I just wanted to add my public thanks. Anytime I have a crazy question, whatever else, you always answer quickly, and you do great work for the city, and all your staff are in there, they're always trying to help everybody. So, I appreciate that very much, and I know you're going to continue to do great work, and the rest of your staff will too. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Tucker.
I want to say congratulations to all of you. I actually visited Pop Austin Recreation Center. I was invited by Ms. Carolyn Evans prior to COVID, and you definitely earned a, earned this reward, this award. Just a great staff, very caring individuals. I, I absolutely love it. And I want to say that Holly knows how I feel about her. We both grew up in Parks and Rec here, and we intersected, some of the same people that raised me raised her in Parks and Rec. So, I know that she gives it her all, because it's in her, based on just that connection. It's different when you grow up in Parks and Rec. It's very different. And it's like, that's your baby, that's your home, and you definitely show that you care, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis.
Thanks, Mayor. Holly, thank you so much for all you've done, and your department's done. You've got a wonderful team, and thank you for, it's obvious, the wonderful things that Parks and Recs has done for the city of Columbus, very noticeable. You personally, I've watched you over the years, and your determination to excel and, and to, to be a leader is something to be cherished. Congratulations on that. Just outstanding work, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Barnes.
Holly, I can't add anymore to the superlatives that you've been receiving, because I'll just say ditto, 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 ditto. But specifically, I want to thank you on the, the regards of all the veterans here for the, the many hours that we spent preparing for the Veterans Day Parade. A lot of people don't realize that we start in July for November. It's a lot of preparation, it's a lot of work, a lot of contacting the organizations, schools, whatever, and you, you're just marvelous. So, on top of all the other superlatives everyone's giving, I'd like to thank you especially for the, the men and women who wear the uniform on our armed forces, for the fantastic job that you and everyone in Parks and Recs do for our veterans, and, and for our very patriotic city on our Veterans Day Parade.
Thanks, sir. Holly, we are very proud of you, and very grateful for you, and it's been a tough year, and you've still managed to shine, as has your department and all the folks who are involved in it, so thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Did you want to say something? You good?
Just thank you. I appreciate it. Obviously, I have an amazing staff. That makes my job a whole lot easier, and so it's, it's, it's easy to do good things when you have great people with you. And so, we have an amazing staff in our department that have big hearts, that care about everyone in our city. Doesn't matter what it is, how old, or a disability, or, or anything, they don't care. It's about people, it's about serving those who we surround ourselves with every day, whether they're a neighbor next door, down the street, or across a community, they're still our neighbors. And our whole department feels that way, and that's just how we operate. So, I'm very excited to stand before you and run such an amazing group of, work with such amazing group of people, and run an amazing department. So, thank you for that opportunity, I appreciate it, and thank you for your, your wonderful and kind words this morning. Thank you, it means a lot.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Pardon me. We have, we've had an issue in the, in the community that we've been working with, really our partners in this, in XIDE Battery for a while, and they are here this morning to present a statement to the, to the community, and I'd like to invite them up to the, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, before they begin, if I may.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
I want to recognize Sheriff Countryman is in the audience. We lost a thirty-year veteran Deputy Sher, Sheriff yesterday, Sergeant Bobby Williams, and I want us to make note of that. This is not the first of our employees that we have lost, but when you have people who have given thirty years to the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office, we need to stop and pause for a moment and say thank you, and I'm sure that the, that the sheriff will agree with that. Please give our regards to Sergeant Williams' family, and let them know that we are thinking about them, and we appreciate his service. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager.
If I may, so, and I appreciate you, Mayor, for moving this up to have Mr. Ken Hewlett, XIDE Environmental Response Trust, Path Forward Consulting, Inc., to come forward, and, and the reason he's here, Mayor, you, you've stated that many of us know that XIDE Battery operated here in our city on Joy Road for many years, and XIDE Battery is no longer in business at that location. And so, when the mayor and council learned that property, obviously, they are not in business, and the property is vacant, they challenged me and staff to do everything that we could to make sure that there is no contamination, that there is no health or life-threatening concerns, make sure that citizens have no concerns, and, and so they were, the mayor and council have been proactive. The district counselor, obviously, Bruce Huff, wanted to, he pressed us to make sure that there, there's absolutely nothing going on in terms of contamination or health or life-threatening concerns. And so, our staff have worked with EPD, EPA, and, and so we have Mr. Ken Hewlett here today with Path Forward Consulting, Inc., and he is going to present and answer all of your questions that our citizens, your constituents will know, whether, and, and there is contamination or any health or life-threatening concerns they should have. And so, with that, Mr. Hewlett.
Thank you, thank you. It's, it's a pleasure to be here today to talk to you on behalf of the XIDE Environmental Response Trust about the site here in Columbus. I have a short presentation to summarize for you the, the fact sheet that we provided previously that followed the conversation that we had with some of you a couple of months ago. So, we'll start here with a little bit of background about the bankruptcy and the trust, and, and why we're here to begin with. So, the, the site was operated, I think you probably know this, but I, I'm going to cover it anyway, the, the site was operated from nineteen sixty-one until 2020 as a lead acid battery manufacturing and distribution facility. They also did some lead smelting there, and then in May of 2020, XIDE declared bankruptcy. And because there were properties within the XIDE holdings that were contaminated, such as Columbus, this got the Department of, US Department of Justice involved, EPA, and several state agencies, and attorneys general got together to create a trust that would hold these contaminated properties and some funds to, to try to keep those properties being remediated, do as much work as we can to keep them as safe as we can. And so, the XIDE Environmental Response Trust became effective on October twenty-third of last year. The court appointed XIDE Environmental Response Corporation as the trustee, and so I'm here today as a representative of the trustee, and I'm the portfolio manager for sixteen of the, the XIDE properties that were placed into that trust. There was a, there was a seventeenth property that Path Forward manages. It's out in California, but it's also in a separate trust. And it's important to note that, that Georgia Environmental Protection Division is not only a beneficiary of this trust, it is also the, the lead agency, so that means they oversee the work that we do, they review our work plans, they review our budgets, they approve the work, and we have biweekly communications with them, so they know what's going on on this project. A little bit more about the trust and our responsibilities and obligations. At the, at the top of the list here, we are not affiliated with XIDE Technologies. I, I'm sure all of you know that. I will tell you that it's been a challenge with, in particular, vendors. We had our own challenges with Georgia Power here. Unfortunately, sometimes vendors see the word XIDE, and they say, well, this is our second bite at the apple to go get those bills that the other guys didn't pay. So, we had a fair challenge convincing Georgia Power that we are not XIDE Technologies, and we literally cannot pay their old bills. We were close to getting the power shot off a couple of times, but we managed to, to avert that with a little bit of help from EPD as well. So, we're responsible for performing environmental activities at the site to maintain compliance with the applicable permits and regulations. These are environmental actions, and they're all described in the, in a consent decree and a trust agreement that, that created the trust and outlines specific requirements and instructions for how we administer the trust. Those documents also provide funding for us to do this work, and that funding came from, in partial from the debtor, which is XIDE Technologies and their affiliated companies, as well as some surety bonds that were purchased as financial assurance for properties, just like the one in Columbus that had. like the one in Columbus that have environmental obligations. So the, the consent decree and trust agreement then placed specific amounts in an account created for each one of the XIDE sites. So Columbus has its own account within the trust, and it had a specified amount that was going to be in there. The accounts can be supplemented if we can manage to sell some assets, which we have done a little bit, but for the most part, that's kind of challenging, and we are, you know, we have to live within our means. We're retirees on a fixed income essentially. And then the trust will perform work on the site until those funds run out, or hopefully we can sell the property. That really is the goal here, to try to sell the property and transfer those environmental liabilities to a willing, a buyer who can then turn the property into another productive use. Then this last bullet here is highlighted because it's very important. The, the Columbus funds are limited in that they are not anywhere near what Georgia EPD believes is the, the amount required to fully remediate the site. So that means that the trust has to triage the facility and the site's needs, we can, you know, so we can perform work that we feel will be the most impactful within that limited budget that we have. So let's talk about what we've done so far. The smartest thing we did was contract with American Environmental and Construction Services to provide our operations, engineering, and consulting services. They're a company based in Alpharetta. We've got full-time staff on the site helping us operate the site. They've got office staff and engineers helping us out. They've been in the site in, in Georgia for 25 years, and they do magnificent work. They are, they're, they're helping the trust, saving us, you know, every day. They do great work. Here with me today is the, the president of the company, Roger Daniel, their project manager, Kerry Williams, and their engineer, Art Pickin, and they've got a great team, and the trust is lucky to have them. We've also hired RBC Wealth Management. We did receive $12 million. It seems like a lot of money. It's, it's much less than what we need, but it's enough that we have to take good care of. So we have a wealth manager doing their best to add a little bit of interest income to the, to the fund so that we can stretch those trust dollars as, as long as we possibly can. We have managed to do a little bit of asset sales. I, the picture I posted here is, is a nasty piece of equipment that we somehow managed to sell. Found somebody who'd like to buy it, we're happy to offload it. We would have had to pay to decontaminate that and pay somebody to throw it away, but we got somebody to, to give us some money for it. It wasn't a lot, but you know, every little bit helps. We've also managed some cost savings and avoidance. AECS has done a great job optimizing our systems on-site, shutting down electric circuits we don't need. Our, our very large electric bills are now much more manageable. And we're also being able to, we're also been able to remove some equipment from the site. AECS found a, a lead smelter who wanted a bunch of really horrible-looking lead smelting equipment in our facility that is apparently useful, even though nobody else wanted to buy it. So he's hauling that stuff off right now. We've sent 40-something truckloads off the site, and this is all material that we would have had to decontaminate, decommission, haul off, and pay somebody to, to, to get rid of. It's, it's, it's going away for free. So he didn't pay us, but we didn't pay anything for it to go away. It's, it's a great deal for the trust. A little more on, on, on trust accomplishments in Columbus. This is wastewater and groundwater treatment. I don't have to tell you, y'all got a lot of rain here, and when, when, when water hits the, the ground or a horizontal surface on this site, if it gets lead, and it does on most of our property because there's a lot of lead, we have to treat it before it can leave the site. So in the last, not even a year now, we've treated 38 million gallons of stormwater and, and, and actually wastewater without any exceedances of our permitted regulatory standards. That's a terrific accomplishment. It's a lot of water. And, and even on top of that, AECS designed a system to divert water, clean water that was off the site and running onto our site and having to cause us to, to, to treat more water than we really needed to. So they've managed to get that water, keep that water off the site, and that saved the trust a great deal of money not having to treat that. And then they, they have to do, it's, it's, they're old systems, so they are making repairs all the time, they're improving the system so that we can operate 24/7, which sometimes happens when we get big rain events. We talked about a vapor intrusion study when we did our, our phone call a couple of months ago, and I know this is a, an important item for a lot of folks. We performed a preliminary evaluation using a computer model that predicts the risk associated with vapors potentially moving from impacted groundwater up into a structure at, at ground level. We used a, a model called the Johnson and Edinger Model. This is an EPA recommended model. They have a spreadsheet on an EPA website that we can enter certain amounts of data into. It comes with default data, but we have site-specific data so that we can have more confidence in the results that we got. I just, there are a handful of examples of the kinds of data that we have for this site, groundwater, temperature, depth of groundwater. And the upshot of all this is that we got a, a very favorable result from the run of this, this study. We provided a draft report to EPD and it's, the draft was provided to the city as well. And the possibility of vapor intrusion in local structures is very low, based on the fact that groundwater depth is quite deep and the soils beneath the site are very low, they're very low permeability. It's a small grain size, and it's, it's difficult for vapors to travel through that soil. So this report is subject to EPA approval, EPD approval, pardon me. They have provided some comments to us that do not dispute our conclusion, but they would like us to beef up the, the data and the support, so they've asked us to do a little bit more work. We are doing that now, and when that's done, we'll, we'll prevent, present a final report to EPD, and upon their review and approval, we'll send that report to you as well. So some of the work we're doing right now on the site, we're dismantling, decontaminating and removing contaminated baghouses and ducting and the associated stacks. You can see some of those right there in the shot. As I said, we're removing some lead smelting equipment, and we've been investigating the source of the volatile organic compounds in groundwater that we just discussed a moment ago about the, in the vapor intrusion study. But it's important, I think, for a moment to talk about groundwater. Just, I want you all to understand that groundwater underneath the site is not being consumed. There are no groundwater wells within three miles of the site, so this is not water that anybody is drinking. Obviously, you don't like it in the condition it is, but it's important to understand that. Okay, work we have coming up. This is plans we right now are completing for submittal to EPD. We expect to do this work over the next few months and finish it in late this year, early next year. This is going after the, the main source of lead on this site. We're going to do that by de, demolishing one of the buildings, building two. We're going to decontaminate building one, and then we're going to restore the site. So this means we're going to be doing asbestos abatement, waste and equipment removal, we're going to restore the site back to grade, and then we're going to clean and/or seal as many of the horizontal surfaces as we can so that we don't have to treat as much stormwater as we've been treating. We can, again, stretch out those trust dollars by reducing our, our treatment costs and get this site in a little bit more control for us. So that is, that's the end of the presentation, and I, I know there may be some questions and discussion, I'd be happy to chat.
City Manager?
Well, Mr. Mayor, so because, you know, you obviously asked and you were proactive, you and members of council, and wanted us to make sure that we have answers for district, that district and for this community. You can see that we've, we've got Mr. Ken Hewlett here and, and an entire team of people to answer any questions, but we've heard from him about the groundwater and their boots on the ground, they're doing everything that they need to do. EPD, Environmental Protection Division, and EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, Mr. Hewlett and others, all are involved to, to make sure, and, and we feel good about the report that we are getting, and you heard him saying that he, they send their reports to EPD?
Yes, sir.
And, and then they scrutinize it. So I want you to know that, you know, everything is happening as you want it to see happen to make sure that our citizens are safe, there are no concerns, there are no contaminations, there are no worries, and, and that is exactly what we've done, and that's what we know to date, and they are here to answer any specific questions that you have.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Huff?
Mr. Hewlett, I'm Bruce Huff, City Manager mentioned. I'm the district person there. Thank you for being here, thank you for taking time to reach back out to us and let me know what's going on. I had spoken with City Manager in the beginning about the major, major concern was any vapors that you mentioned that would be escaping that facility into the neighborhood area and any of that groundwater that would seep over into the neighborhood. Is that possible? Is it being taken care of where it will never happen? As far, as far as those that have property?
Right.
Will all that contaminated, everything that's contaminated, will it stay on-site? The water itself, or will it, could it possibly seep into the grounds around in the neighborhood?
Yeah, so, and that's what that vapor intrusion study was doing, was essentially saying, okay, so with the, the conditions in that groundwater that are under structures around the site, what is the possibility of vapors coming up from groundwater and into homes? And the answer is it's, the possibility is very, very low. That the, the risk is below the, the risk levels that the, the state sets.
Okay. Because I had some citizens years ago that were working in the yard, and for some reason they became dizzy and did not know why, and that's how this came up with me speaking with the City Manager. They were concerned that there were vapors in the air some, some time back that they were not aware of, and they wanted to make sure that they were safe. I was out, there's, there's a, a set of houses around it, and there's a trailer park around there, and I was out at the trailer park for a meeting last week and the same concerns. So just want to make sure it's safe for the, the neighbors and as far as the cleanup in the future. It seems like you're on task as far as what you're trying to get accomplished. I know how complicated it is, so I get with the City Manager to get me into the weeds to help me figure out when to stop talking and understanding that the people are safe.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so if you could just say that and let, let me know on, on camera today that my, my neighborhood is safe.
So I, you know, I, I, this vapor intrusion study is, I mean, it's still, it's a model of, of the, the conditions that are out there right now, and we're very comfortable with the results. You know, there are risk levels that are established by the state where if those numbers are exceeded, if they're met or exceeded, we get worried and the state would, would call for action to be taken. Well, the numbers we have out there are, are well below, almost a couple of orders of magnitude below the risk levels that the state deems worthy of concern. So I, I think that I can say comfortably that the, the analysis we've performed shows that the risk is, is well below the level the state thinks is one of concern.
And, and, and I will say, and I know that we've got engineers, our engineers here, but when there is an issue where something exceeds the limit that is, has been established by EPD, EPA, they come see us, you know? And, and they haven't been to see us. So to his point that it's below a limit that would, would have them dispatched from their office to come see us.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to, to make sure I understand, we are waiting because this is going to be submitted to the EPD, and then the EPD will put their stamp on it after you've completed the additional data retrieval that they've asked for. And at that point in time, we will get a, a statement that has been kind of blessed by the EPD as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I do have one question for you, and it's from past experience. If something should come up and citizens had some questions or concerns, will there be a contact number provided to the citizens? And my reason for saying that, in Oakland Park for years, we have this black siff that comes through the air. EPTA has been involved, the city has, and supposedly they stopped, but it's come back, but it's been so hard for the citizens to get back with that company because it's coming across the water, right, our porting sister, Alabama, Phoenix City. So that's where my concern comes in, because everything can be seen perfect at the time, but you don't know what tomorrow's going to hold. Right now, we're still battling that, and I've talked to our city attorney several times about it, and it's up to the citizens. You know, we can't help them. It's up to the citizens. So they need a point of contact or something for the future because we're, we're suffering in Oakland Park and we can't get no help. And that stud is still there. I collect the tissue with all the black slits on it, and I have it in my kitchen right now, you know, that paper, and it's like knocking on a brick wall trying to get some help. So I would appreciate it if you would, you know, have a contact or make a comment how to satisfy our citizens, because everybody can today go, yep, 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 but we cannot predict what the future will bring.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, what I would, my preference is that we know what's going on, we, the administration, if there are questions from citizens, and so Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is the person who is handling this, dealing directly with EPD and consultants. And so if they would, if, if they contact you, then you should refer to Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, and, but they can call Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge at 706-225-4206, And I was, the reason I look back, I know her direct line, I was trying to avoid giving her direct line, but she wants you to have her direct line, so, but, but if they call her, then we will know all of the concerns, or if there are multiple concerns, then we're dealing with who we need to deal with to get to the bottom of it or get an answer. So, so I would ask that that be coordinated through my office, through Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge at 706-225-40, 4206, 706-225-4206.
Thank you very much. And, and I'm not being negative, I'm just being responsive because I know, I know what happens later. I'm living it, so I know exactly, and I know that Counselor Huff will get those phone calls and them people upset, and who does he turn to? So that is my reason for it. So thank you very much, City Manager. As always, we can depend on you to help us and to yourself. So thank you for respecting our community and our wishes and being here forth to speak to us today.
You're welcome.
Counselor Davis?
Couple of questions, you may have answered it earlier, but how, how large is the parcel?
Little over 20 acres.
Little over 20 acres, okay. So when you're finished with everything you do, what, what happens to the property then? Does it go back on the market or what, what takes place after that?
So our, our goal would be to sell the property. That's, that, that's, that would be the, the, the best outcome for us.
So that's your responsibility?
Yes. That, I mean, it, it's my responsibility to manage the site as effectively I can with the budget we've got until that running, money runs out. Ideally, and we are marketing the property currently, ideally that property will be sold, sold before we run out of money.
So you'll clean it up and then everybody understands the condition of the cleanup, status, all that kind of stuff, and you just move on?
We'll clean it up as much as we can with the funds that we have. We, we know based on what EPD has told us is the entire liability for the site that we do not, we were not given the funds to entirely remediate the site. We'll do as much as we can, we'll get it as far as we can, and we are already engaged with some potential developers who are interested in purchasing the property, but they want to see how far we can get the remediation, and then hopefully they'll take that on. We think that this effort that I described today in demolishing the one building and decontaminating the other building, sealing the surfaces, we think that's going to get us much further, much closer to a sale of the property. We hope so. we think that's gonna get us much further, much closer to a sale of the property. We hope so.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, um, to add on to what Counselor Woodson was mentioning, can we come up with a succession plan? And, and I think, you know, she made a comment about having somebody to contact, you know, far as the citizens, but have a succession plan that goes beyond this, that we're, we're actually talking about for the years, for the future, and how we're gonna address it. Because if she's saying, I don't know how many years that she's been dealing with the issue she's had, and Counselor Woodson's been on council for twenty-seven years, that's longevity. So twenty-seven, seven years later, if it's some issues, how do we address it?
Well, and, and I want to be clear, the issue that Counselor Woodson was talking about was another matter that came from Phoenix City, not this.
But I'm just saying, in reference to after he leaves and that twelve million dollars is basically drawn.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
You know, how, how are we gonna address citizens' issues?
Well, let me just say that when you all express concerned, concern, we didn't just rely on our internal staff, we went to an engineer and expert. And so we are being guided by our outside engineering consultants, and, and we will continue to monitor. And so, so, so that you know that we are using our own engineering experts. We outsourced it to, to make sure that we, um, do what you asked us to do, to make sure that our citizens, um, have no contamination, health or life-threatening concerns.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis? Hang on, coming to you.
Yeah, to the com, to the subject, the, right now, the trust is the rightful fiduciary of the property to, I guess, through the courts. They've given you the responsibility to clean up the land, do everything that you need to do for remediation from an environmental standpoint. But then they also give you the responsibility to market and sell the property. Funds go into the, well, all the proceeds, I guess, would go into the fund or the trust. I don't know what's done with it after that, but I guess it goes to clean up all these sites across, uh, the country. But after that, I mean, really what we're talking about, it becomes a legal issue. And you're the rightful seller of the property, and then it's a zoning matter. I don't know what the property's owned currently, but it becomes a private property legal matter. And, I mean, what I'm hearing, the city doesn't really have any, any responsibility or any ownership or decision-making in the process. Am I right?
So, I, I think so. We, uh, we own the property. So if we sell the property, we won't be able to, we will have to get EPD's approval of that sale. And that means that any buyer of the property is going to have to agree to perform the remediation that EPD deems necessary. So that's, that's, I think the succession plan that works best, we sell it to a responsible buyer who takes, uh, ownership and, and, and care takes that property into a mediated state.
Yeah. And, and Mayor, you know, um, and, and Counselor Davis, I, I think, I mean, you're right. We are, um, we are just, we're being good stewards by watching over what they are doing and taking care of the, um, any concerns of our citizens. So, but we don't control the property, it's a bankruptcy deal. And I, you know, our only responsibility is to, um, be an embusman and make sure they do it right. And that's why we have an outside environmental consulting firm. And, and I, I'm sure someone will come along and purchase it. And I, I hate to even bring up, you know, when we acquired the tank farm, as an example. You know, we wanted it, but we wanted to acquire it and make sure that, you know, it was clean, or we cleaned it up, or we partnered with someone to clean it up. And so when we, we did all of the environmental, phase one, phase, all of the stuff, until it got right. And now we own it. And so I'm sure that's what any purchaser would do in their case, uh, with EPD oversight, because they're gonna make sure that you do what's required, and then they've got to sign off on it when it's all done. They're not just gonna walk away. So, but, but they have a responsibility too, to make sure that, that property is taken care of and, and, and it's not health or life-threatening to people. They, EPD is gonna watch over them and make sure they do it right, or whoever the purchaser, and make sure it's done right. But we're that extra set of eyes. That's why we have a, a hired outside consultant environmental engineering firm to watch over what they are all doing, working with our staff to make sure it's right. So we've got safeguards or guardrails or checkpoints in place to, to make sure that you, Mayor and Counsel, are being good stewards and watching over what the citizens' best interest would be.
Absolutely. Uh, you know, I think now that we're put on notice and, and we're in a, for the bankruptcy, frankly, we may not have been able to discover this issue existed in the first place. So the trust has worked exceptionally well and very proactively at trying to remediate this as much as possible. And, uh, you know, cause their objective is to get it in a, to a place where potential buyers would think it's worth the investment. And, uh, and it can't do that if they don't try to make this. And, and I think the comforting thing from our perspective is, is just in the assessment piece, after they've done some, uh, sealing, I guess, and some remediation, they have ascertained through their test that, that there is, it's, and the numbers they showed us are, are a fraction of what is considered acceptable. It is well, well below that. And that was our first concern, and, and to their credit, it was their first concern, is what were the, what were the contamination impacts on the surrounding areas? Cause it, it affects our residents and it affects their ability to dispose of the property. No more questions?
Thank you, sir, and I thank you to the team that came down. Uh, I don't know where you traveled from, but we wanted to get you up as quick as we can, because you did come from out of town to stand before this body and answer the questions, so we appreciate you.
I, I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts, too. Thank all of you. All right, um, and I, I think the, we're gonna call up one more item off the City Manager's, uh, agenda. And the reason is, we've, you've noticed, we've got some of our public safety personnel, uh, in, in the council chambers. Sheriff, Police Chief, our Chief of Fire and EMS, uh, and, uh, and some of their support staff. And, and, you know, before we bring this up, I, on Saturday, it was the twentieth anniversary of the terrorist attacks on nine eleven. And, uh, and, and Counselor Allen and I were talking, because, uh, in two thousand one, that was a Tuesday, and we were in a council meeting on the plaza level of the government center. And, um, we had been told, actually before we went into council, that a plane had flown into one of the towers of the World Trade Center. And I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I thought, man, that's a tragic accident. You know, some small passenger plane had a medical issue or a mechanical issue. Well, once we got into council meeting, it was just a matter of minutes before J. Ed Wilson came and gave, uh, then Mayor Pro Tim, Jack Rogers, a note, because Mayor Bobby Peters was absent that day and, uh, and notified us. And then, and then Mayor Pro Tim notified council and those watching that our country was under siege. For the first time, a war had come to our shores, and, uh, we had been attacked. And then, uh, towards the end of the meeting, uh, I believe it was Chief Deputy Jimmy Griffin, who handled a lot of the security back then, came and gave a, another update, saying that the Pentagon had also been attacked. And that, um, they had begun communications with our airport, with Fort Benning and Lawson Army Airfield, and begun to block some streets around the government center, because nobody knew what was going on. And as we heard, the, one of the, one of the primary themes of the commemoration over the last several days, really over the last week, has centered on the fact that there's an entire generation that was not alive when that happened. And how significantly important it is for us to continue to educate that generation and the generations that come after them. And I attended a number of commemorative, commemoration ceremonies, as did, I know the City Manager. I saw him at a couple of them. And it, it became apparent to me that the message that needs to be conveyed to these future generations is not so much, certainly you have to tell the story of what happened that day. But I think the reaction of our country and the people in our country after that day is what really needs to be conveyed to these young people. Some folks that they have a lack of trust in now, where the folks that were charging into those buildings, many of them knew going in that they weren't coming out, and they went in anyway. And they went in for one reason, that's because they have a, an innate desire to fulfill their duty to protect the people that they work for. And that's our, that was the fire and, and first responders and our law enforcement. Single biggest loss for fire departments, over three hundred individuals. I think it was the single biggest for police as well, at almost eighty individuals that died on that day. So what we hope the future generations take from this is how much power this country has when everybody pulls together. We have, the only word I can come up with is patriotism. The patriotism that exuded every pore of every individual in this country in the weeks and months and really years following. We now have folks in the name of patriotism that are dividing themselves from others. And hopefully, some of the stories and some of the revisiting of the tragedy and, and the audacity of September eleven, two thousand one, hopefully, some of the patriotism that they saw in looking at those document, documentaries and those, uh, those television shows, they'll begin to understand that no matter what we look like, no matter how old we are, no matter what gender we are, no matter where we live, no matter the socioeconomic status, at our core, we are God's children and we are Americans. And it's significantly important that we keep that fact in mind and that we share that with these young people coming up. I just wanted to make those comments, um, because with the ARP money that we have been talking about, and the City Manager's asked that we bring that up, there's a, there's a, a, a pretty significant amount that we are putting towards public safety. And it's, it's, um, it's, it's emblematic, I think, of this council's desire to do everything we can fiscally to, to try to support the men and the women that, that, uh, that wear the uniforms and protect our, our communities. So having gone through that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to the City Manager to call up, uh, Item B.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, for allowing us to bring this up. And I do see all of your public safety officials, uh, our public safety officials, um, here. But, um, it was at the last meeting, um, that, um, the Chief of Columbus Fire EMS, Sal Scarp, uh, made a presentation, and he shared with you, uh, his, the, the needs of Columbus Fire EMS and, and, um, his concerns for equipment and amongst other things. And our Police Chief, Fred Blackman, was here also, and he talked about cadet program and amongst other things. And, and so, but when Sal Scarp was done, and he says, I need this, I need this, I need this, and we gotta have this, one of you asked the Mayor the question, when are you bringing this back? And the Mayor said, on the fourteenth. And I about fell out my seat, you know? I don't know who asked that question, and the Mayor says, the fourteenth. So, uh, we had to go to work and pull all this together, cause your boss says the fourteenth, you know? And so, um, and so here we are on the fourteenth, and, uh, Mayor, based on your commitment, the fourteenth, that, well, we're gonna present, um, this information. And we've got some things on the agenda for you, vote in consideration, uh, as part of the packet that Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is going to present. So with that, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. And, and by the way, I, I think I got an email from her, like, last night. I responded about ten thirty or so, so she was still working to make sure she brings this.
She was emailing me some information at night.
You got it too, then?
Yes, sir. Before you get started, uh, Counselor Woodson?
Well, I just wanna apologize to Stephanie U. I say, that was me who asked, when is it coming back? Because once the, um, Fire Chief made his presentation, it was very shocking, um, to see and for us to have one of our public safeties to be, you know, um, injured. It was very concerning, but I didn't really think you would make it happen, Mayor. You're outstanding.
Well, honesty compels me to say, I didn't make it happen, I just asked it to be made happen.
But I do apologize for stressing you out. But, uh, I, I'm wearing that guilt, and you can see the blushing in my face. But anyway, could you go on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good morning, Mayor and Council. Our team has worked, uh, really hard to put this together. I was emailing the City Manager, uh, the HR Director, the Finance Director, all last night, and everybody responds back. So I'm not the only one that was working late last night. So, um, we've put this package together, uh, to respond to what we heard, uh, from the Mayor and Council, from the presentations that were made. And so we'll go through the presentation. It does relate to public safety and also the ARP, so it's all part of one, uh, presentation. As we went back to look at all of, um, what's happened over the last several years for public safety, there's been a lot of, uh, changes that have been, uh, approved by City Council for pay. Pay reform for the police for years of service started in FY sixteen. Uh, we went into FY seventeen with a step adjustment, moving that minimum, uh, pay up depending on your education. Sheriff pay reform came right after that with years of service. And that was the chart that, um, for, uh, different years of increment service, you received, uh, an addition to your pay. That was, uh, for the sheriff in FY eighteen. Pay reform, again, we adjusted that schedule in FY nineteen for police. And the step adjustment, uh, was made in FY nineteen to further bring up that minimum, to address some of the concerns of hiring and retention in the police department. Uh, there was another adjustment in FY twenty for the police department. Uh, the Sheriff's Department adjustment in FY twenty-one. Uh, part of, uh, the budget for this fiscal year, FY twenty-two, was the addition of two thousand dollars, uh, for the police department. Uh, the Fire and EMS pay reform was, uh, included in FY twenty-two, as well as specialty training incentive and MCP pay reform. So all of these things have happened since FY sixteen, um, as we move forward with public safety and the importance of public safety. Uh, there were pay adjustments and bonuses, not just for public safety, but for all employees. From two thousand twelve to twenty twenty-two, there was a pay adjustment totaling seventeen and a half percent, a two percent. We did a payroll conversion bonus for all employees in FY eighteen. Uh, given, it gave an additional time off in FY twenty as a response to COVID. Uh, FY twenty-one, there was actually a bonus paid, uh, for COVID of six hundred and fifty dollars to all employees. Included in this year's budget, the classification and compensation study of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, that RFP will be out next month, hoping to have the consultant on board by January of twenty-two for council's recommendation and approval, uh, into twenty twenty-three. So we're moving that forward, um, as quickly as we can, uh, with the direction from the City Manager. Also to note, during this time period, there has been no insurance premium increase, uh, for the sixth year. So twenty, uh, twenty-two will be the sixth year of no premium increases as long as you're a participant in the wellness program. Uh, so just to walk through, and I, and I'll go through these charts, uh, pretty quick, but a comparison of twenty sixteen, what the starting pay was based on the educational, um, degrees that a police officer has, has when they start, and then comparing them to where they are in twenty twenty-one. So the starting police officer without a degree at thirty-six, So the starting police officer without a degree at $36,891, this was back in 2016, all the way up to if you had a master's degree, $40,023. Where they are in 2021, they're at $44,583. And then at the bottom, I've shown what they were back in 2016. So you can see the importance that the council has made in public safety and moving those starting salaries and up for our public safety departments. With a master's degree up to $48,000 from $40,000. Sheriff's deputy starting pay back in 2016, $36,891, up to the $40,000 with a master's degree, where they are in 2021 at $41,719 and $45,181. For a correctional officer with the sheriff's office, starting was at $33,715 up to $36,977, and where they are today at $38,088 up to $41,460. And this is for a correctional officer with the sheriff's office, which is a pay grade 12. Police officers and sheriff's deputies are at a pay grade 14. Fire and EMS, their starting salaries.
The correctional officer is the officer who works in the jail, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, so this is, technically, are they a deputy or?
No, they're a correctional officer. So they're at a pay grade 12 as opposed to a deputy, which is a pay grade 14.
Okay. And they have some of the same authority that the deputy sheriff has, right?
I believe so, but I'll let Reether Hallwell, the HR director, make sure that we answer your question correctly.
Go back once.
Yes, in terms of the correctional officers at the jail, that's where they are primarily working, they are grade 12. And yes, they do have some of the duties that a deputy has, but a deputy is more, compares more to a police officer. They are sworn, and they go off, they're sent off, they have to get a certification, have to be certified to be a deputy versus the correctional officers that work at the jail. That's why the difference.
Do the correctional officers not go to the post-training?
They have, they are certified as well, but there's a different certification to become a deputy. There are different requirements to become a deputy as a grade 14 versus a grade 12.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, I will just acknowledge that the sheriff is in the audience. If the deputy city manager or HR director said something that should be corrected, I'd ask that he come and correct. Are they correct? Good.
Thank you.
So for fire EMS in 2016, starting at their pay grade 12 at $33,000, no, I'm sorry, their pay grade 14, up to master's degree at $40,000. And then they're at 2021, they're at $36,404, and up to $43,274. MCP, there are correctional officers at MCP in 2016 at $33,715, up to $36,977. Where they are in 2021 is at $38,088 and $41,460. So you can see, as we move through each of these public safety agencies, how their pay has been adjusted over this time period. Wanted to just talk a few minutes about the public safety capital that has been spent in the last three years in FY19, over $1 million, and FY20, $400,000. Last fiscal year, $2.9 million. Included in the budget for FY22 is $5.8 million. Now, this does include some carryovers of items that were budgeted in prior years that didn't go through the entire process, but a total of $5.8 million in FY22. Also, there were some GMA leases or other leases that were done in FY19 for 30 police cars, 1.1, almost 1.2 million. The public safety radio upgrade, almost $5 million. The wireless microwave system, almost $700,000. In FY20, GMA lease for 80 pursuit vehicles at $3.2 million. So over this time period from FY19 through FY22, over $20 million of public safety capital has been spent or planned as we move into FY22. So the immediate support request that came from the fire chief at the last council meeting, what's on the agenda for today is six ambulances out of the ARP funds. Also on the agenda today is the purchase of property adjacent to Station 8. This is $120,000 out of the OLOS public safety reserves. This is addition to Station 8. This is an older station that does need some expansion. The property next door was for sale, and we have come to terms with them on that if council sees to make that approval. Also on the agenda is the upgrade of the EOC for $130,000. $50,000 of this will come from a GMA grant, but you can see the pictures since Chance Corbett has been in place, has really done a lot of work on the EOC. Before, it was rather tight, only a few people could be around that table on the right-hand side. You can see how he's reorganized it to make it more efficient for the operation of the EOC.
Excuse me, Deputy City Manager, Council Huff.
Just a quick question, what's the location of Station 8?
That's on Whitesville Road.
Okay, thank you.
For the future, we are saying 30 to 45 days as we finish the process for procurement and to get it on either the next agenda or the one in October. One ladder truck through a GMA lease. We currently have two ambulances that are on a five-year lease that runs out this year. So this particular lease will just really take its place. So moving forward, there wouldn't be any additional budget impact for a 10-year lease of one ladder truck. And then also five engines out of the public safety OLOS reserves at three, almost 3.8 million. So this will be on future council agendas in the next few weeks. For the police department, both capital and their reclassification personnel request, what's on the agenda today is the reclassification of 20 police officer positions for the expansion of their cadet program. And this is really a feeder program for police officers. It's not doing away with police officers, it's really providing that feeder program. They're 18 years old, can get into this cadet program, and they would be ready to move into a police officer role in a few years. There's also a career ladder implementation that the chief spoke of at the last council meeting for this position, to encourage them to stay with the police department and move into those police officer positions. Also, will be coming forward along with this program is 359,000 of uniforms and capital. This would be the ATVs and the UTVs that the chief discussed at the last meeting, as well as three mid-sized SUVs for this program. For the sheriff's capital needs, you know, we've had many conversations. The sheriff has reached out to executive management about the condition of the jail. We've all taken a tour with facilities maintenance. There have been some improvements made at the jail of about $2.5 million over the last several years. We've made improvements to the kitchen, the shower area, we've replaced the HVAC system, the laundry piping has been replaced, the water heaters have been replaced. But we really saw the need for a full assessment of the jail, and so that is what will be coming forward on a future meeting, to do a full jail assessment, what improvements need to be made, as well as the sheriff's administration space that we've been speaking with as we move forward with doing something with the government center. A lot of the sheriff's administration that's in the government center could be relocated onto the jail site for efficiency in the sheriff's office. So that will be what the assessment will include, looking at the master plan of the jail site, what improvements need to be made to that jail. So that will be coming forward on a future council meeting for approval. So moving into the American Rescue Plan and how that relates to also public safety as we move forward with the recommendations for the American Rescue Plan. Again, this is some of the information you have heard. It is put into law back in March of 2021, and it was for economic relief due to this pandemic that we're all going through and continue to go through. There were some uses of funds that were specified in the American Rescue Plan, and those are the things that we're looking at for the recommendations that we have brought forward to you at the last few council meetings.
Excuse me, Pam. Council Crabbe?
I can wait until she's finished.
Okay. Council Tucker?
In reference to this use of funds, after we attended the GMA conference, we're missing one category, and that is to address negative econ, hold on, I'm sorry, which one it was?
Negative economic impact?
To workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries. That's the one that we're missing. It was five. It was five use of funds categories.
I think that is part of the negative economic impact, and that is the, like, small business loans and that, so I think it's part of that category. Maybe they had it broke out as a kind of a subcategory, but...
This is listed on the treasury.gov.
Okay.
So, and the only reason why I say that, because when it talks about, and it goes really in-depth, when it talks about the impacted industries, you know, that's when it talks about tourism. And with specifying tourism, like, say for instance, I attended the concert at the Civic Center, and we know the Civic Center bring in tourists, and they need some upgrades on their HVAC, so we could possibly do a $2.5 million project to do a COVID-safe HVAC system that would do like the UV lights and all that good stuff. I'm just throwing out things, but it would go under that category of including that category far as workers, households, small businesses, and impacted industries. So I'm just, in reference to us when we're talking, just to add that part.
Yes, ma'am. And so, part of what the county and the city, as a consolidated government, we received both those city and county allocations totaling $78 million. Half of that was distributed to us in June, $39,241. The balance is anticipated next June of 2022. So again, the interim final rule has been released, and there was comment period. We have not received a final rule, but we have received from Treasury the fact that we can operate off of the interim final rule. If something changes as part of the final rule that we have already moved forward with as part of the interim final rule, then we are good to go. So that was kind of our signal that we're ready to move forward with our recommendations to council. Our first recommendation is the replacement of the garbage collection system to include the garbage trucks and the carts. This is our current operation, which is the rear feed garbage. These are the cans that citizens use throughout our community, and these trucks, we do have the inmates on the back. The recommendation is to go forward with the one-man truck, which will be an automation process, and also to make all of the trash cans throughout Columbus the same. It will really clean up some of the areas of our community, and we can utilize our ARP funds to make this a reality. The next, as I mentioned earlier, to include six ambulances at $2.1 million as part of the ARP, those are on the agenda for today. Another recommendation is the community safeguard program to include the Cure Violence Summer Youth and Youth Development Programs, as well as the cameras. The procurement process is in place for the cameras. You'll have an update today from Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin on where we're at with the cameras. So we're moving forward with that particular program, and I know the Cure Violence is going through their assessment process, and so we'll get an update from them shortly. The broadband cybersecurity upgrades, we're going through the procurement process for this particular recommendation as well. Revenue recovery at $3.5 million. The utilization plan on how those funds, as they were replenished back to the government, will be used. The finance director is working on that plan, and that will be coming forward to council in the next few meetings. The small business grant program at $3 million, we're working on that application process now, so we'll be coming back to council with that as well. Premium pay for public safety and other essential employees, I will go through that in more detail in just a few minutes. The stormwater, we have deferred to phase two of the ARP funding because we heard so much from nonprofits and tourists and economic individuals and businesses of their needs, and so we have added from the original list, the $1 million for nonprofit grants and $850,000 for economic and tourism grants. We're working on that application process as well. And then the administration of 200,000, just over 200,000. This will include a full-time temporary employee for up to three years during the time that this ARP funding is in place, a project financial analyst, and then other oversight expenditures. There is a lot of reporting that's required as part of ARP funding, so this person would be in the finance department to handle all of the reporting requirements and any issues related to ARP. So that is our total recommendation on the use of the first phase of ARP funding at $39 million.
Council Crabbe?
Thank you. A lot of the items that are on this list are also items that we were addressing with the SPOLOST money. And so I'm wondering, are we adjusting the SPOLOST ask? And are we taking, are we, are we adjusting that because we're taking, we didn't know about this? And so some of the things are being taken care of with this, so can we or are we thinking of adjusting the SPOLOST?
I need, can you give us an example?
Trash trucks, ambulances?
That trash trucks is not in the sales tax.
Ambulances and fire trucks? Yes, they are.
Well, obviously, we don't...
There's vehicles, there's vehicles on that SPOLOST.
Yeah, but it's not a duplication. In other words, we've got 14 ambulance units all total?
I understand that we probably still need some in the SPOLOST, but we are buying some with this, with these funds too. So we would not need, you know, say, say there's 15 and we're buying five here, are we adjusting the SPOLOST to 10?
Yes. Well, I don't think we have 15 in the SPOLOST.
I'm just saying that as an example.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We would adjust if there is a need to, but...
There won't be any redundancy.
There's no redundancy.
And I think we need to, I think we need to let the citizens know.
Sure.
Because, I mean, I don't, if, there's no need for us to ask for too much money from them. I think we owe them, you know, that we are showing them that we are good stewards of their tax dollars and that we're not just double-dipping.
Well, and absolutely, we're, and maybe we need to clarify, but if there, if we, if we're, the overall goal is to do 14 and we do six out of ARP, and we're gonna do the difference, or let's say six out of the sales tax, as the mayor says, there's no redundancy, and we need to make sure that they are clear on that, it's, we're not duplicating. But because the money came in $39 million now and $39 million later, we want to do something to address concerns throughout the government and not, we don't want to do all ambulance units. do all ambulance units, and then we can't do something else.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just want us to, I just want to see how this may affect our SPOLOST ask.
And I'm saying to you, this does not.
Yeah. But I tell you, it brings up a great point, though, because we do need to just make sure that we've got it very cleanly
Yes.
outlined, and we can do that because there isn't any duplication. I mean, we're very careful, and one of the things is you didn't want to pull too much for one, for like fire, out of, let's say, the ARP money. And you didn't want to pull too much out of SPOLOST because we have some needs that we can, that can only be met by those individual financing mechanisms. So they were, there were some that were divided, especially in the heavy equipment. I think we've got some areas that if we did buy, say, one truck from the ARP funding, we might need four, so we get the other three, for example, from SPOLOST. But that, that could be made more clear, so we'll do that.
Thank you.
So just to talk a little bit more about the ARP premium pay for essential workers, you know, these are the workers that are performing the work during this whole public health emergency. They were the regular in-person interaction with the public, handling of items that were also handled by others. Premium pay would be done retrospectively back to January of 2020 through June 30th of 2021. These were the individuals that were not teleworking at all. They were at work face-to-face, and this would be premium paid out on October the 15th of 2021. So premium pay, and these are funded through ARP for essential workers, would include all sworn public safety officers, bus operators, truck drivers, correctional officers, sanitation workers, janitors, and custodians. And I do have to make a footnote that ARP only allows for those employees to receive premium pay that are working, that earn a salary less than $78,000. And so this $3,000, up to $3,000, and it's done in $1,000 increments based on the amount of time that you have been here. So if you just started in January of 2021, obviously, you wouldn't be entitled to the entire $3,000. So it would be six months time periods. If you were hired on or at, on or before January 27th of 2020, then you would be entitled to all three of these increments. If you were hired on or after July 1 of 2020, only $2,000 of the total. And if you were hired on or after January 1 of 2021, your premium pay would be $1,000. If you were hired after July 1 of 2021, then you would not be entitled to this premium pay that is being recommended for a total of $3,000. This is 1,289 employees for a total cost of $4,467,000. So that is the premium pay that's recommended out of the ARP funds that is on this list for today. Also, pandemic, for all essential workers, so all those that don't meet the premium pay as defined through ARP, they would be paid through the CARES Act Reserve Funds, and this is a total of $1,500 to all those employees who have continued to serve the citizens through this public health emergency. So it would be, again, the same increments, but at $500 increments as opposed to $1,000 increments. This is a total of 881 employees for a total of $1,488,000. Those public safety sworn personnel that do qualify for premium pay other than their salary exceeds that $78,000, they would still be entitled to the $3,000 as all other public safety employees are, but their funding would come through this CARES Act Reserve Funds as opposed to the ARP funding. So they are still going to be treated the same as public safety employees. There is also state fiscal recovery funds. That application deadline is October the 31st. The award is expected sometime after the first of the year, and they have put out an application for two specific uses, the negative economic impacts, as well as investments in water, sewer, and broadband. Eligible applicants, not only are cities and counties allowed to apply for these funds, but also trade associations, business organizations, nonprofits. So we have also tried to inform as many nonprofits that we know of that this funding is also available to them for them to submit their application. The city intends to make application in three areas. One is stormwater, as it relates to the combined sewer, which qualifies. Also, our broadband infrastructure, as well as a continued expansion of the Small Business Grant Program. So we are going to submit those three applications for also state fund to couple with the funds that we have received as well.
Mayor Pro Tem Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Pam, do you have information on the broadband, how it's applied, and what it's, what it's aimed at to fix or provide? Is that all rural areas or all the city providing broadband access for everybody, or what do we know?
We have what's in that application, and I know the IT Director is not with us today, and I know Jeremy Miles is here, and he can respond to that question on their intention for the broadband.
Mayor Pro Tem, can we bring that back
Yeah, I was gonna...
to you, but we, I wanted this included just so that you know that it's on our radar. We are going after state dollars, and so I wanted to, I just didn't want to leave that out.
Okay. Well, just when you're ready, it's fine with me.
Sure.
So the application for broadband, not all is going to be included, but we can bring it back?
Well, I can kind of give you just an overview. The current application that we're working on is to allow for all public safety and public-facing buildings to get up to what is called high-speed internet, which is above 100 megabyte, and it would allow for public Wi-Fi, like parts of rec facilities and public safety facilities like that. That's the current. Now, we will expand upon that, but that's currently what we're working on.
And Mayor Pro Tem, we'll come back and give you some additional information as well.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Woodson?
Yes, Saatch, just a quick question. When you mentioned the nonprofit organizations, are we reaching the nonprofits that we're aware of with the Crime Prevention Program, or are we reaching out totally? And my only concern is because there's a lot of small nonprofits that don't interact with us, that need the funding, that need the help. How are we touching them?
So we have contacted everyone that we work with through our Community Reinvestment Department, some that have attended our meetings when we were having ARP meetings. So anyone that we can get in touch with, we have provided the link to this application process. And I know the nonprofits have kind of a network that they utilize, and I know that they're trying to also inform. But anyone that you know of that you want us to provide this to, just let me know, and I can send them the link to the state's application process. And again, it's through October 31st, so everyone still has time to submit their application.
Okay. I just met with a small nonprofit that's trying to know how to get funding for their program through crime prevention, and I just gave him Seth's number and asked him to set up a meeting and have their plan ready to discuss it with him. I didn't go into a lot of details, but I just thought about it when you mentioned it because there are a lot of small ones like that that don't interact with other people. They're within the community themselves, and they're the ones that are, I'm not saying the others are not making impact, but they're making a severe impact because it's their next-door neighbor and the next, next one that we don't know about. And so I want to make sure that they take advantage of this also, to be entitled to some of this money. So can I give them your email or your phone number?
Absolutely.
You know, and then I can, especially, I'm going to call this group that I was with yesterday and have them reach out to you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So just back to kind of summarizing the public safety support, those items that are on the agenda today, but just to outline again, there's been a lot of work in this area in the past with pay reforms and supplements, incentive pay, improvements at the jail, capital investment, $14.5 million, and again, that no increase in health insurance, which obviously impacts all employees as well as public safety. Present, what's on the agenda today is the six ambulances out of ARP, the EOC upgrades, the cadet reclassifications. The $5.8 million is part of the budget and the carryovers for this fiscal year. And also on the agenda today is the property acquisition for Station 8. And what will be in the future, in the next 30 to 45 days, will have the ladder truck, five engines, the cadet uniforms and equipment, that jail site master plan and assessment, and as well as the classification and compensation study will be moving forward in that RFP released within the next few weeks. So at that time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any additional questions? Any questions of any of our public safety individuals that are here? Councilor Barnes? Hang on, let me get you.
I'd like to make a comment. I'm glad that you, prior to this presentation, you made a comment that you did. For the most part, in this community in Columbus, the citizens have the utmost respect and confidence, especially during this pandemic period. And I'd like to give an example. I have two areas in my district. I call both of them Ford Apache. And one of them, there's, it's a six-block area, but two of those blocks, it's horrendous. Some of the citizens, they give, care nothing about the law. They care nothing about keeping their homes up. They have animals running wild, dogs running wild. There's definite, in the open, drug activity. And so the citizens reached out to me to have, because I told them, they've got to, the citizens have got to be the eyes and the ears of our public safety. So they finally, although they feel intimidated now, they're intimidated by the drug activity. So I just asked, and they said they wanted the Neighborhood Watch. I said, "The one weapon you have is the Neighborhood Watch." So they asked for one. So I called Major Wright, and I just asked for Major Wright and her administrative staff to come. At 6:10, Chief Freddie Blackman and his entire command staff, entire command staff and officers came, and they walked the blocks with me. They sent a loud message to the criminal element that the public safety is behind. To me, and I know the day started at 7:00, to me, that reverberated throughout that area right there. Not only that, but Ms. Contrera, there were dogs running wild. She collared one herself, a pit bull. How she did it, I don't know, because I was afraid for her, I'll be honest with you. She collared a pit bull, and they bought that. Also, special enforcement was there, and they took down all the houses where there's overgrown yards and trash all over the place. You need to go there, Parkchester Drive, you need to go and just take a look at it. And if I can have the same thing done at the other area that we spoke about. But that goes to show you the level of commitment. And the Columbus community, the good citizens, the majority of citizens know that they respect and they honor public safety. But that's just an example, one example. For him, the Chief of Police and his entire command staff and other officers walked the area with me. So I'm really glad that you made the statement that you did. It just reinforces in the minds of the majority of the citizens just how dependent and how fortunate we are to have public safety. I mean, the police force, Fire and EMS, the Sheriff's Department, all those agencies are behind our citizens, and they know it. But thank you for taking the time to make that report.
Yes, sir, and thank you for, thank you for mentioning that. You know, Pops, it's, we've said it, we've heard our public safety and our law enforcement leaders say this over and over again, and our counselors. The key to success to being able to police our way, because we can't police our way out if we don't know what's going on. And these men and women are committed to following up on any information they receive, and it is vital that the communities take a chance, trust the officers, and invite them out there, get them involved, and let them know what's going on. If you see something, say something, and the individuals that we have working for the city, public safety departments, will act on it. So thank you, sir. Any other questions? Doesn't appear to be any.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing us to bring that item up on my agenda. And let me just say that, of course, two meetings ago, we presented the ARP priority list, and we, it was following three public meetings that were televised, and we listened to the people who were present. We made adjustments in that ARP priority list, and you saw today where the Deputy City Manager reiterated that we took some things off and we added things like nonprofit based on citizen participation at those meetings. And so we did adjust the list based on what we heard from citizens because we wanted them to know that we were listening. And so we've put together this package. We've got the funding priorities that we've listed today in this presentation to you. We want to move forward because it takes, with the pandemic going, it's, it takes forever to get equipment. You see on the agenda today, I believe it's 31 Ford Explorers, that we reached out to Public Safety Departments because they've been waiting on pursuit vehicles that we can't get, and they were sitting on a lot. And they said, you know, "We need to get these vehicles and just, right now." And you see in other communities, some Ford Explorers as pursuit vehicles. And so reached out to Public Safety, and each one of them said, "Yeah, get those vehicles." And I make that point to just say that it takes time to get buses and garbage trucks and equipment because we're going, whether it's windows or doors or whatever, and so there, and fire engines, ladder, whatever, it's going to take 12, 18 months. It may take longer. So there's an urgency of now to move forward with this funding priority so we can, we can start putting, getting in line with other communities who are trying to get some of the same equipment that we're getting. And so you've heard the presentation. Deputy City Manager Hodge has answered the questions, and so this item is on my agenda, asking you to authorize the funding priorities for the first allocation of the American Rescue Plan of $39,241,019.
Motion approved from Councilor Barnes, and I heard second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? I guess we can queue this up because it is, can we, Bruce? Do we need to just take a voice vote? Counselors, please register your votes. Okay, that's approved.
And so Mayor and Council, we, our staff, they've really worked hard to pull all this together, and I want to express my appreciation to them for their hard work. So thank you to them, and thank you for your confidence and support of the staff in moving this forward. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Tucker?
Yes, I would like for us to have like a work session for the next allocation of funds. I know Councilor Huff mentioned at the last council meeting about projects that some of the counselors may want to have, or some things that we would like to see funded. So if we could have a work session, and then just like what Councilor Crabbe was talking about for us, overlap of projects to make sure that, you know, all of us know exactly what's in the treasury. And that was the main reason why I wanted to ensure that we... And that was the, the main reason why I wanted to ensure that we discuss all five, because with the support public health expenditures, it has behavioral healthcare in there as well. And we know that we're in a mental health crisis. So, and I know that Sheriff Countryman would, would love to have some additional assistance in that, in that jail, because most of those individuals that are in the jail actually have mental health issues. So that, you know, maybe it will be some resources that we could do for, for the jail in reference to the behavioral health. So that's the only reason why I wanted to make sure we capture all five categories.
Yes.
And that'll help, you know, because I know.
I agree, I, I agree. And what we'll do, even leading up to that work session, we'll solicit from each of you, if you would just give us some of your priorities, things that you would like us to include, so that, you know, we know, and, and hopefully you will have many of the same priorities. And then when we bring it together, we can make sure that we, because you represent your constituencies, and we can make sure that we're bringing the priorities together based on what you're hearing from your constituents. And it's, I, I, I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
And, and Mayor, I, I will say, because I don't want to hold the public safety people here, but in that ARP thing that you just approved, you approved the six ambulances, you approved the emergency operations center, and you approved the pursuit vehicles, that's items A, B, and M. Are those the three?
Plus the property.
Now, plus that, the property acquisition that's on my agenda, so that they don't have to hang around to, and, and go to work. That's number five on my agenda. So you've approved number five, A, B, and M on the agenda. I just wanted to make that clear, so that they know.
Okay, thank you. Council Woodson?
Yes, City Manager, I also wanted to add to that request. I know that there's conversations out in the, in the community of, okay, we're using this money here that's going to free up, you know, some money in our budget. And I'd like us to be able to clarify to the public, yes, why this, and, but I want y'all to do it more professionally than I am, but that, yes, this does free up some money, but that does not account for all the other needs that are needed. For example, I know in public safety, we need more vehicles. We need to figure out, when are we going to get those vehicles? We just got a Band-Aid from the fire department, there's more to be done with public safety. We also need to look at our city employed. I don't want our city employees to feel that we focus on public safety and, and forget about them. They're just important, because public safety needs them to back them up, so they can do their job.
True.
There are things in our neighborhoods that might seem very simple and small to anybody else, but to that community is important. We need more arts of positive in our, in our community. We need to look at little small parks and be self-taken care of, or companies can adopt. We need covers over our bus stations for those elderly and disabled that have to ride a bus. And because our bus, our budget, bus schedule isn't as frequent, because our ridership is so small, we had a presentation here. So there's so much that, just because we're using this money for that, the other money we have is going to be used just to finish up what we need in our community. And it's very, very important, and I like to know, as we, and I've always said that, and I've always gotten excuses for it, well, excuse me, I'm not going to say excuses, I'll take that back. But I'm always given a reason why we can't. I really feel that, you know, when we have these hotel motel taxes, or we have all these other hotel, all these other taxes that we do, if we could just take a small portion of the funding that we get and put it for maintenance, you know, put it for, for something that we can use in the future, or take the interest of, of our savings and put it in a pot, or it could be for these, these emergencies, and we always don't have to go after bonds and try to figure out how we, how we're going to pay for it. You know, the public safety, I've gotten some information from people and concerns, but I just want us to look at it as an overall picture and let our, our constituents know, because they hear these millions of dollars, and they hear vehicles, and they hear this, and even though it's important, it's for them, they don't understand, they feel they're being left out.
Well, and, and I understand, and, and I guess I want to maybe phrase it in this way. We're not freeing up money, we're able to start to catch up. In, in other words, you know, we can buy, we could buy a hundred vehicles right now for CPD with this money, but we probably need three hundred and fifty vehicles, because they've probably got, you know, when I see, whenever you see a Crown Vic riding around, whether it's a sheriff deputy or a police officer, if you see them riding in a Crown Vic, you need to be trying to get them out of that Crown Vic. That's an old, they don't even make them anymore. And we still have them riding around in Crown Vics.
You are, because every time I see one, I text, I text the old chief, hey, take a picture of it, and text the old chief, and say, what is this?
So I just say that we're not freeing up money, we just, they would be driving that Crown Vic much longer had we not gotten this money, so we are just playing catch-up.
And if I could just add, you, you touched on something, that we have had those, those conversations, and I know the finance director and the deputy city managers, and the city manager and I have talked about it, and we continue to, to, to advance the notion that we need to go ahead and begin to start, to set aside money now, and let it, act as seed money, because all these things that we are able to purchase right now, they have a lifespan.
Mm-hmm.
And if we buy them all around the same time, guess what's going to happen all around the same time? So we've talked, and there, and Angelica's done an awesome job about, you know, just kind of storyboard, and how are we going to cover all that? Do we do some with leases, we do some with purchase, put some money aside, do we earmark that and try to budget for it every year, so that you feed it a little bit more, so that when you've got your replacement program in, in force, when you come around in five to six years? And that's why you see some of these vehicles for fire and EMS and, and the police department and even general government being staggered. It, it, it draws out the pain a little bit to wait another year, but it also creates some separation between when that replacement has to take place.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because, and, and like me, I didn't realize, I, I was heard, and it's being done. There are citizens out there that need to know that, to know, to know these things, to know they are, we are working to do preparations for the future, because look at even our buildings, look at our rec centers, look at our buildings. We got, we got to come up with a, with a, a plan for the future, not all that, not put a Band-Aid on it, be able to patch it and move on.
I think the challenge is that, you know, when people say, you don't do maintenance, we absolutely do maintenance. I mean, we've got people in public works that are plumbers, that are electricians. We do, we do the regular maintenance like you would on your house, every single month. We do it on a regular basis. But what happens is, when you've got buildings, when your house gets twenty-five, thirty years old, guess what? Now you've got a big-ticket item that hits. Those are the things that typically you have to either borrow money, or if you've been fortunate enough, you could set some aside. And under our revenue generation structure, there are some limits. I mean, not, no political comments, but there are some limits on how the money comes in. So that, that's the challenge, is how we are able to earmark those funds and not dip into them when we have another.
Well, I think too, it, I think too, is asking our constituents to help us to, you know, if they see somebody destroying a bathroom, or they see graffiti, you know, to report it. If they see trash out on the ground, you know, you just finished a, a game, and everybody just threw their trash, everybody helped clean up, and help us to maintain our parks and, and our facilities better, not to depend always on, you know, on government to do it. But that's my little soap opera for the day. I just, I just feel we need to, to remember those little things while we tackle the big problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Thomas?
I have a question about the acquisition of the property on Whitesville Road. I know that we have talked about the renovation of Station Eight as part of the splotch, and I assume that this action today is in keeping with that renovation, that, that, that will, that changes in the dormitory and so forth will go into that Whitesville Road. My question and my concern is, heaven forbid that the splotch not pass. What then is the plan for this property?
Well, we're, we're going to still have that need, and, and I, I'll let you respond, but we need to figure out whether, if it doesn't pass, how to get that done, because they still need the dormitory, what, what do they, what is it they need?
Yeah, this is an older station, again, built in the sixties and the seventies, and if the splotch doesn't pass, those improvements still need to be made. It probably won't be made at the same time period, but because this property came on the market, it's right next to the fire station, it was just taking advantage of that opportunity while we had it. And, and so it will remain a vacant property if the splotch doesn't pass, but we will have that property next to the station when we're able to make those improvements.
And I, I want to make sure that everybody and their brother knows that I am in favor of the splotch. And I'm not by any, in any way suggesting that this not happened. I'm just concerned that, I know that this was originally the plan, and I want us to make sure that we have a backup plan. We've talked a lot today about backup plans, and I'd like to make sure that we have a backup plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
And one other thing, if I may, to Council Woodson's point about the maintenance, we have talked as a council several times about making sure that on our legislative agenda is the item to allow us to spend splotch money as maintenance. Our, I think our citizens don't understand that, don't understand that we can't use splotch money to maintain the pool. We can build a new pool, but we can't maintain it with the splotch money under the current law. And so we need to make sure that the current law is tweaked, so that we can spend splotch money for, for maintenance. I believe that's a correct statement.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Council Davis?
Mr. City Manager, if I, I wanted to add some comments to your presentation that was put up a little bit earlier, and, and, you know, maybe short and sweet, maybe short and spicy, but, look, I was thrilled to hear you say what you just said, that you were spot-on. Use the words catch-up. We're trying to catch up. I just want to remind Council that, you know, a lot of the, the, number one, the city, our city government, our city, we can't be a cure-all sawal for every matter, every issue, every request, every type situation in, in the community. It's just not going to work. And you have to remember, remember that the money we're, the funds we're talking about here are one-time, and it's not going to be around all the time. And eventually, that adrenaline shot's going to wear off, and somebody's got to cover all those costs. Now, at the same time, I have to say, you know, when I look at this, we are increasing our budget. We are increasing our budget. And just a reminder, this economy, our country goes in cycles all the time economically. And we've had some good years, and we've caught up, and we've seen some good things happen, but that could change on a dime. And we've always talked about the priorities of our government, the priorities and what we're trying to accomplish, you know, and staying focused on that. But for so many years, we have not been able to catch up on capital replacement, or vehicle, equipment replacement, and those kind of things, and now's your opportunity. If you don't do it now, then it's going to stress your budget even more when this short period's over with. And I hope that we understand that there's an opportunity to solve some of those matters that we've all talked about, and that the management, executive management, the mayor has stressed us for so many years. And we need to stay focused on that. My concern with all this is the, the physical irresponsibility versus responsibility, the non-accountability versus accountability. I have to be honest with you, we're placing a lot of trust and confidence, as you said, in your, in staff, in the administration, the executive administration, mayor, your administration, in doing the right thing here. Because this is, this is a lot, it's a lot of stuff moving.
Yeah.
It's going to be a lot of requests, everybody's got their hands out. And, you know, when you talk about formulating the applications and the, the accountability process, and all these requests and requirements, et cetera, I mean, that's going to be a heavy, a heavy obstacle to overcome, but I'm going to have to put, we're going to have to put a lot of trust and confidence in the executive administration to do the right thing, and to be physically responsible in how we move forward. My concern is that we've got a, you know, we won't get this opportunity again, but we've got an opportunity to catch up on a lot, a lot of
That's right.
...issues, problems that we have, that the government has to address in our various departments throughout. And if we don't do it now, keep in mind that that's going to be added stress
Yeah.
...on your budget later financially.
That's right.
And you're not going to be able to go back and recoup it. And you may have to make some difficult decisions of that. And you mix that in with, a recession will come, we go through these things all the time. And there'll be some changes in the economic currents out there, I, I promise you that. And it could come soon. So that's going to stress our budget even more, and I just wanted the Council to realize that we've already, we're starting to increase our budget. And, you know, you're not going to be able to keep that pace up, and we've got ourselves into a position where we've got some reserves, we've built up the fund balance, we, the retirement fund is solid, you know, we've dealt with healthcare, we've dealt with a lot of these challenges that we're responsible to our, the employees and, and the government operations, and we've done a good job, I'm the city manager. But I'd hate to, to look back and say we missed an opportunity. So I just wanted to add that into these conversations as we're having, and let you know that it's a great challenge, it's a great responsibility, but I'm placing a lot of my trust and confidence in you and the executive administration's staff, that we do the right thing with this, this unique one-time opportunity that we have.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on now, I guess, to the city attorney's agenda. Assistant City Attorney, let me see, hang on, hit your light again. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, councilors. We have a very short agenda this morning. Our first item is a second reading, an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance that is ready to, for a vote. It would amend the ordinance to provide for a category of use called solid waste transfer station, which could be made a special exception in either HMI or LMI zoning districts.
Council Davis?
Mayor, in talking to my colleagues and just kind of working through this, it's become obvious that there's a lot of issues and concerns with this matter, and I'm going to make a motion that, at this time, that we not approve these, these new additions to the UDO, and, you know, it does leave opportunity in the future maybe to come back and relook at it, but right now, I think that there's just too many issues and concerns. I make a motion that we do not approve this request.
All right, there's a motion to deny, and, by Council Davis and a second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none. Oh, Council Huff, I'm sorry, let me get to you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just had a question. This will just be tabled until later down the road?
Sorry, you may back.
Okay.
I mean, we, we delayed it for two weeks. And there is a motion on the floor. Unless that motion is withdrawn, we'll have to allow council to vote on that one.
Okay. And the, what's the current zoning?
Right now, there is no, as I understand it, I know Director Jones is here, but as I understand it, that there is no allowance for a, even a special exception use in any of our zoning categories.
Okay.
We got the whole world lit up over here. Y'all be patient.
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Hugley?
Well, Mr. Mayor, just, just for clarification for those here and those watching by television, they probably don't know what this is, you're voting on. So can, I'd like to have staff to just say what this is because I think you separated one item out and then it left two items. And so if he would just summarize in summary, what, what is it we're talking about here?
Good morning. You may recall, we came to you about a month ago now. Recall, we had the issue of the existing solid waste company in town that was trying to find a location.
That one was separated out, but you...
I'm sorry?
I think that was taken out at the last meeting, the waste transfer center.
No, this, this is my, we're talking about the waste transfer station today. Is that, that...
Is that the one you're talking, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm almost sure we're talking the same thing.
The other amendments passed at the last meeting and the transfer station is the only one still under consideration.
Okay, great, okay, go ahead.
You may recall, though, that we had the solid waste station come and ask for a new location, but we couldn't put them in another location because we determined that the actual zoning part of the, of the UDO does not contain a use of that type. The solid waste ordinance itself talks about it, but not, not the zoning part of the UDO. And so we came and asked for a, a actual use to go into the, to the UDO with the understanding that you do it as a special exception. And special exception simply means, again, that we notify the property owners within at least 300 feet. After post-assignment, we have to run an ad. We have to have the planning advisory and has come to council for final determination. And that's what we were, we were trying to achieve more than anything else. With the understanding that if that passed, this company or any other company would have to come back to council for, ask for, for permission and approval, really, to locate another solid waste facility in this, in this community. As it stands right now, the, where the existing one is on veterans, they're allowed to stay there forever and a day, providing that they, you don't try to expand that operation. Or if they should stop that operation for more than six months, then it goes away at that time. But for right now, they're, they are allowed to maintain that site on Veterans Parkway.
Okay. So there is a, a motion to defeat. Counselor Tucker, is this to the motion?
Well, it was a question in reference to the second reading. It was just to add the definition of what solid waste is in the UDO. It, it was only for the definition, right? That we're about, we're, we're only tabling the solid waste transfer station definition.
Well, you're, you're... In order, in order, in order for, Mr. Mayor, in order for it to go, go forward in the UDO itself, you've got to define what that use is primarily. But then you also got to establish that use as a allowable use, a legal use in the zoning ordinance itself. And that's what this ordinance would try to do.
Yeah, vote against, I think, Counselor, would basically be a policy declaration by this council that that particular use is not acceptable inside the city of Columbus.
Okay.
And, and that, I mean, it's a reasonable assumption since we are a consolidated city and county and we're just about to fill up the county.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're, right now, tabling the definition only which is...
There's nothing being tabled right now.
Oh, what, what did you?
To defeat it, to vote, they're voting to deny the addition of a definition and the opportunity to apply for a special exception.
Okay, I thought we was tabling.
Not yet. All right. So any more to the, to the motion, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just, just to, for clarification's sake, I think really in simple what, the request is to establish a category in zoning in order to have waste transfer stations or temporary dumps, whatever you want to call them, in Columbus, Georgia. What we are doing now in taking this off the table is there won't be a category. So we are saying, basically, that we don't want this in our community at this point. There's too many concerns and issues. And that we have the ability to come back at another day and look at it. But we are not creating a new category or a zoning category for waste transfer facilities. And that is just the dump aspect of it. It doesn't include, you have to remember, what we're talking about is a temporary dump. It's a waste transfer structure. Parking of vehicles, equipment and things like that. There's opportunities out there as far as zoning. This is for the one aspect of the dumping. And right now, based on the conversations I have with everybody, there's too many concerns and issues. We, we just, we're not interested in going down that path right now.
Well, I think you have to acknowledge that we already have that facility in town. They're on a piece of property they own and they're grandfathered in. They will continue and certainly are able to continue to operate.
Well, and, and, Mr. Mayor, may I just make a comment? Well, well, and, you know, I was just gonna say, I don't know if this helps or hurts, but, you know, I, I think it's to say, if you approve this, then it could be in, it could be in your district. Now, if you, if you say that you want these things here in Columbus, it could end up in your district or some other district. If you do what Counselor Davis and, and Mayor Pro Tem second, it, it will never be in your district.
All right. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, this, this issue has been one of the most convoluted I have had to deal with since I've been on council. And I want us to make sure that we know what we're voting for. And I don't know if Ms. Davis, as the clerk, can read the motion or if Counselor Davis wants to repeat or Director Jones wants to repeat. But I want us to be absolutely clear on what we're doing. The motion, as I understand it, that's on the floor, is to defeat item number one on the city manager, the city attorney's agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I'm, as Director Jones identified, I'm, Rick, come back up instead of me saying it and saying it wrong and you correcting it. So the only thing that this...
If we do that, Director Jones, if we vote the, vote this down, what does that do?
It does, it, it doesn't, I want to try to say this as succinctly as I possibly can. The action would not have any impact or effect, from a city standpoint, anyway, on the existing business out there on veterans today. They're, again, as I said earlier, they will be allowed to stay out there forever and a day. They're, they're, they're a non-conforming use, but they're, they're a legal use at this time under the previous ordinance and all that good stuff that goes with it. Their operations still do it. What, what this ordinance was trying to achieve was trying to establish a legal use in the, in the UDO for this type of operations. With the understanding, again, that it had to come back as a special exception, not, not just an out-and-out use, only as a special exception, meaning it comes back to council for final determination. If, if council is so determined today, you wanted to defeat that, the issue just goes away for the most part and we're still, we still have a, a solid waste transfer station on Veterans Parkway, irregardless.
Okay.
Okay.
This simply allows a method by which a solid waste transfer station could operate in Columbus. If we vote no, other than the one that's grandfathered in, there's no provision for it to go anywhere in any zoning classification in our community.
If a business wanted to, they could come back through the planning department next month and request it again, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. They could come back through that, the whole process again.
How long of a delay? Because this is a staff-originated change, right?
That's correct.
So it's not the same requirement as an applicant that applied and then was defeated and then wanted to come back?
As far as who actually applied for the, for the request, it makes no difference on the timetable for, for the actual amendment to the ordinance. We're talking, again, I want to be clear, we're talking about an actual text amendment at this time only to the ordinance. We're not talking about anything else. We're not, we're not authorizing anybody else to come in and operate, operate a, a solid waste transfer station. All we're doing is establishing that, that fact in the, in the UDO itself. So, Mr. Mayor, primarily in terms of the application process, it takes us about 90 to 100 days to go through that process.
But you don't have to wait. My point was, you don't, there's no period of time that you have to wait. Because I was under the impression that for somebody, if they're a petitioner for rezoning and they defeated, they have to wait a certain amount of time.
This is not, this is not asking like asking for zoning classification change. We're talking about a text amendment.
Okay. All right, we've got a few others. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a process question that kind of goes back to Counselor Thomas's point. Based on the way this motion was made, the wording in the motion, I think we have to vote yes to defeat it.
That's correct.
So hit the green button, not the red button.
Right.
That's correct. Thank you for pointing that out. Counselor Tucker?
That's...
You got it?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, that's, I mean, I go back, the motion is basically, only the word defeat, that, that doesn't register in my mind. Really, we're just voting not to make any changes to the UDO. That was the motion. We're not accepting the changes that have been presented to us. And that could be denied, defeat, you can, you can pick a word.
Well, now, let's pick one then because now I'm confused.
Well, I mean, I was clear, I was clear with my...
All right, the motion, as I heard it, Madam Clerk, the motion was to defeat the ordinance. Okay, so in order to, to deny this text change, you must vote yes because you're voting to defeat, all right? Any other questions? All right, hearing none, please cue the vote. And you will vote yes to defeat or no, you want to support it. All right, and that motion is defeated. All right. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to explain, it, it may, look, there are several and many opportunities for businesses to expand and to do their operations. I don't think that's, that's an issue here on the table. They're already doing it in such a way. But companies are growing, they're taking over new companies, other companies. I mean, these are now becoming national companies or foreign companies that are running the whole waste pickup operations in Columbus. There are opportunities, they're, they're operating now from that standpoint. And, you know, the, the, the question is, it becomes a business model decision. And I think that there's many opportunities for them to fulfill that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a first reading of the amendment to the FY 2022 budget, which would permit the 30, no, excuse me, the 20 positions to be reclassified for the police cadet program. Because it is an amendment to the budget ordinance, it does need to come back on second reading on the 28th. And I think you've already heard the discussion about it.
Any comments around the table or any, from, from the audience? Anybody have a comment?
Thank you. All right, I'd like to call up our resolutions, number items three and four together. These are both requests of the Airport Commission. They have been given the opportunity to receive two more grants from the Federal Aviation Administration, one in the amount of $3,500, $351,000 plus and one $527,000 plus.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem. Heard a second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue the vote. And councilors, you can register your votes, please.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is we will need to request an executive session, both on litigation and the acquisition and disposal of real estate.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll move on now, thank you, Madam City Attorney, to the public agenda. First is Mr. Paul Olson. Mr. Olson, thank you for your patience. City contract with Piedmont Columbus Regional, three mills and property taxes and engine care, contract ending in 2022, and the embezzlement of Superior Court funds. And I'll, I'll tell you, Mr., we probably won't be able to answer the...
I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna be able to get all that.
Answer the last one because it's still under...
No, I know. I'm not, probably even covered that today.
So I'll start it after you state your name and your address.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Name is Paul Olson. I live at 13830 Uptory Lane. I have up on the screen, if you would, put it up on their mic. That's the Georgia income. It's a Georgia Department of Monthly Income for the poverty level. And it's at 120, 125%. And according to the contract that was signed back in 1992, it basically said that you're indigent and you had to be a resident of Columbus. And I, I have a problem because of pure fact that nowhere's on that thing as an asterisk saying, excluding prisoners. And why do I say that? Because I talked to Greg Countryman and their budget is about $5.3 million for medical care and also psychiatric care each and every year. And the thing is, is that from '92 on up to 2014, when you guys did an amendment, that's 180-14. I brought this out, that you guys were charging 110% each for the prisoners. That's overbilling. To me, it's not in accordance with what it should be. The resolution 28292 was a non-binding agreement to authorize a contract between the city of Columbus and the Medical Center or Hospital Authority from July 1st, 1992, for 30 years until June 30th, 2022, which will be expiring. It was a unilateral contract. What do I mean by unilateral? Means it's one-sided. And a one-sided agreement is illegal, especially when Hardy Polles, who was the city attorney at that time, and it says it through the city charter, which is our local constitution, that he shall endorse, means that he must sign. Well, if he would not sign, and it has Lemuel Miller, who was a clerk of council, who signed as a witness with that, with Frank Martin, Frank Martin, who was the mayor at the time, then that thing is not valid. On top of that, any amendment after that, and I have basically a OCGA 13-1-1 in 2010 that says, if that wasn't legal from the very beginning, then it isn't legal as an amendment. Okay? So in, in all reality, that thing has never been legal from the very get-go. It obligates the taxpayers three mills in property taxes. And that equates to $14.8 million. Prisoners are considered indigent and, like I said, 110%. It has been used, in my estimation, it's been used to purchase hospitals because there's never been really a forensic audit. And why do I say that? Because Columbus Regional started out with just Medical Center. Then they bought John B. Amos Cancer Center. They bought Houston Clinic. They bought Doctors Hospital. I mean, I can go on and on and on. And when Piedmont bought it back in 2018, they paid $250 million for it, but they also inherited $280 million. That's $530 million. Everybody here should be really alarmed because of the pure fact that when they were out there purchasing it, they put it under the umbrella of indigent care and nonprofit. So they took things like Doctors Hospital, Houston Clinic, John B. Amos, who were paying property taxes, off the property tax list. So I, I figure out about $5 million less in, in the coffers and, in the, in the city coffers. In 2015, what should be really alarming is Columbus Regional Health agreed to pay a $35 million, settled to allegations that it offered lucrative kickbacks and incentives to physicians and unlawful billing in violation of the False Claims Act and Stark Law. That's not something I'm making up. It's in the Ledger Inquirer, you can Google it. That should be alarming. You're dealing with somebody who basically was fined $35 million. And usually, if you're fined thirty-five million, that means you probably stole about a hundred million. I'm just saying that. It's just unbelievable. People should have been went to prison. But then, after they purchased in two thousand and eighteen, in two thousand and twenty, twenty twenty, employees of Columbus Regional Healthcare System filed a class action lawsuit against Piedmont Columbus Regional Retirement Savings Plan, which has cost each of these individuals, basically, you know, thousands of dollars in their retirement plan. That should be alarming to people. Should be alarming that, basically, this was created, this has created a monopoly, this Columbus Regional. Okay? So I say to everybody out there, and I talked to Cliff and Fay many years ago, that basically, we only have to have, required by law, one mill in property taxes. And if we do that, it should be dedicated to the prisoners who are truly indigent, not somebody in Spring Harbor. Spring Harbor, I mean, they fall under this umbrella. And, and it takes three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars just to purchase something out there. So they don't fall underneath the offices of that. And this should be alarming. And the other thing is, is that we get ten million dollars...
He times up.
Okay, ten million dollars annually from the state, and that hasn't been audited. So I'm asking you to do a forensic audit, because we just saw six million dollars being stolen from us in the Superior Court.
I appreciate it. And I will tell you that...
God bless you.
Thank you. And I will tell you that we are, and the city manager may want to add to it, but I'll tell you that we are in, preparing, and staff has been working and, and communication with our current contractor. But there will be some changes in the way that contract was structured. I think it's safe to say there were a lot of questions by councilors as to how that contract has played out. But we do have an opportunity to make sure that we're contributing from a morally acceptable amount on behalf of our citizens that need that assistance. So we'll, we'll, we'll follow through on that. All right. Next is Ms. Arisha Lawrence, representing Music and Entertainment Council, and here to introduce the Music and Entertainment Council, bringing together local government, tourism, music stakeholders, building an even stronger music. Arisha, AZ.
Great day, everyone. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Manager.
If you would, yeah, state your name, and I'll start the timer after you get your name and address.
I'm so excited.
Now you're good. We're excited you're here.
Arisha Zupora Lawrence, here for the Music and Entertainment Council. Honorable Mayor, thank you. City Manager Isaiah Hughley, and every distinguished council member here, some I have never met and some that I know very well. I'm glad to be here today. I'm glad that a few members for MECC are here. For instance, a two thousand and twenty BMI Song of the Year Recording Artist, Wendy Wyatt, who is also a distinguished pastor. Oz Roberts. We have country singer Nellie Black, a producer and arranger, Jay Chantel, and a young man I haven't met yet, but he said, hey, I want to be here to support music. So we're here just to talk about something that's always here. When you think sustainability, when you think longevity, when you think growth, music has always and will always be here. It brightens everybody's day. And some people, it makes sad. You know, it, it's a mood changer, right? But it helps, mental health. When you think of everything that happens in life, music is a part of that. Now, one of the things I enjoyed most was the introduction to City Council this morning. Music was all up in that baby. So I was like, yes, this is awesome. This is going to be great. But, um, you know, a little background music now would help too, but that's just a suggestion. I don't want to wear the Patience of the Saints, and I appreciate Pastor Reverend Dr. Burgess, Colonel Burgess, being here, who I serve with honorably each week at Saint Mary's Road. But there's some ladders in your email, and if you check them, I sent them at ten twenty-five, so everyone should have a copy. The mayor also has a copy, and he's known about MECC for a while now. And we appreciate all of his support. We just want you all to know that music is here. Why are we here, though? Why is the Music and Entertainment Council needed? Because music cities is the thing of the future. It's what Columbus is needed. We need the definition of music city for Columbus, Georgia. When you think tourism, when you think attraction, when you think retaining talent of this beautiful school right behind us, you know, Rainey McCullough, listen, we want every young person that's training there to stay right here in this region, to help us grow jobs, to sustain the economy. All of these things are a part of what we are driving to do, along with our partners, Georgia Music Partners, and we appreciate their endorsement. And we also appreciate the endorsement and the support of Sound Diplomacy, who now is an official voice with the United Nations for music and entertainment. So we just wanted to introduce ourselves, to make sure that you knew who we are and vice versa. And we know that the mayor will fill you in, possibly through our voice. Councilwoman Toya Tucker, thank you for all you do. Councilwoman Mimi Woodson, thank you for being there and for being present at the loft. That meant everything to every artist, entertainer, and musician in this city. We really appreciate you. And all others, who I know you probably sing in your church choirs or whatnot, you play orchestra, whatever it is that you do, just think music. Please read the email. Please respond to us. We are here. We love you. Everybody, have a great day. Columbus is amazing.
Thank you, AZ. You know...
Amazing Grace. That's all I got for right now. That's all I have for right now. You say a little more? Okay, let's, let's do this congregationally, but safely. Mask on. Amazing Grace. How sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. I once was lost, but now... Through City Council and God. I am found. Was blind, but now I see. Praise God. Y'all have a great day. Thank you.
I do want it noted that I am compassionate. I turned my mic off before I started singing. Z, thank you for your passion. This is really a, I mean, it's a, it's, it's something that I know Ms. Lawrence is passionate about. She's been pursuing this. It's a, it's an incredible initiative, and I think as more and more people in the community hear about it and get behind it, it's going to be something that really puts Columbus not just on the music map, but on the map, period. So thank you so much for your energies and your efforts.
Always.
Oh, Counselor Tucker? Counselor Tucker?
Hey, I, I know Mr. Broadwood is giving Zia an earful over there, but she is so talented. I don't know if you all remember, but last June, when we had our peaceful march, she was the one that did the music. She, she, she set up everything. We had practice. I mean, just an amazing person, really. And she's an advocate. The first time I met her was in two thousand and eighteen, and she was coming up to speak about music and the importance of music and how music really can bring tourism. And we saw that at the Civic Center. And you were there when those five thousand people came out to safely, safely, you know, be entertained. And it was amazing. And I want to say thank you, Z, for all that you do for this community, because you're not only, you know, working in the music industry, but your, your concern about the community, about the safety, you know, about the violence that we, we have seen increase. And you're always doing stuff, whether it's feeding homeless, you know what I'm saying? Actually, during the, the vaccine drive at your church, just doing so much, so much for Columbus. And I just want to personally thank you publicly for all that you do.
Also a great member of the committee on the Dream Lives Committee, so we appreciate her help with that as well. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, Miss Z, thank you. Thank you for the invitation to include me in your, in your program. It was amazing. I, I feel like you're an angel from God, and we need that music, that music that brings us and unites us together. My colleague has said all the wonderful things, but I just want to personally say thank you for including me. Thank you for letting me be a part of your dream. And please keep me in touch, and if anything I can do, I'll be more than happy to, to do it. And consider helping us next year with the Tri-City Latino Festival. That festival is, why it's called Tri-City Latino, it's really not a true Latino festival. It is a multicultural festival. Our music starts from noon to five o'clock, English and Spanish. We don't have a lot of money, but we're, we're willing to work and negotiate and, and do things. And, and that's the whole point of it, is to bring all of our God's children together. So think about it. Reach out to me, and, and let's see what we could talk for next year.
Thank you all so much, and we definitely will be there at the festival this Saturday. Yes.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to thank Z too. That was awesome. You got me all fired up here with Amazing Grace. I tell you, ready to go to church, you know? But, but, but she mentioned there's a country singer. I'm trying to, I, I can't identify this country singer. You know, who is a country singer? You need to introduce. I might see her, you know?
She's amazing. Nellie Black.
I need to see her face. Country singer, okay.
Yes, yes. I'm a single songwriter. And I do write and sing country music. I also have written a song about our city that I have presented it to the past mayor. And she heard it and she loved it. And I have sang it in several different places in Columbus.
Okay.
So...
So, so you have a country note? You could, I, I'm just, I just got to hear this, this woman saying...
If you're ever coming down, down by the Georgia Way. If you're coming for a visit, or even if you want to stay, just below the big ATL, about a hundred miles or so, is a place you need to stop in and really get to know Columbus. Columbus, my home. And I'll leave it right there.
All right, all right now. Current mayor needs to hear the rest of it.
Yeah.
Shoot, man. We might, we might have found a new background music for starting council meetings.
Yeah.
Thank all of you for being here, and thank you for what you do and what you continue to work towards with this Music City designation. Z, good job. All right. We'll move on to the city manager's agenda. Mr. Hughley?
Mayor, number two on my agenda is the Georgia Municipal Association Hub Cities Conference Donation. There are thirteen cities considered hub cities, and those thirteen mayors and thirteen city managers convene on a quarterly basis or a couple of times a year. And the mayor and I will get to host, for the first time, the hub cities, mayors, and city managers on September twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
All right, it's a motion approved from Counselor Tucker, second from Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? Hearing none, could you cue it? The councilors, please register your votes. That's approved.
Next, I've got retiree health insurance plan request...
All right, this is a motion from Counselor Woodson, second from Mayor Pro Tim. To approve. Any discussion? All right, please cue it. The councilors, any votes?
And Mayor, I do want to read this, because I want our retirees to hear this.
Yes, sir. It is approved, by the way.
And so this was authorizing renewal of the Medicare-eligible healthcare plan benefits and the United Healthcare Medicare Advantage Plan. The retiree's monthly premium rate will be ninety-nine dollars and twenty-three cents a month for the city subsidized retiree group hired prior to July one, two thousand and one. And it will be a hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty cents for the unsubsidized retiree group hired on or after July one, two thousand and one. The out-of-pocket maximum will remain at one thousand dollars annually. And so, but, but they need to know, two vendors made bids for coverage, Anthem Insurance and United Healthcare. United Healthcare presented another strong bid for coverage for calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. Because of United's healthcare competitive bid, excellent customer service, stability, and consistency, it was determined to remain with United Healthcare. And so ninety-nine dollars and twenty-three cents a month for city subsidized retiree group hired prior to July one, two thousand and one, and a hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty cents. I think, you've already...
Yeah, it's...
I just wanted you to know...
Been approved. It was pre-approved.
Yeah.
Insurance.
So I just wanted the retirees to hear what they are getting, and so...
And I think the chair of the retirees health...
Larry Campbell.
I mean, Larry Campbell is here. Mr. Campbell, if you had any comments?
That was a tough act to follow.
You have to sing your comments now.
No, not me. Turn on your mic off. No, I just want to thank the council and the city manager and everybody involved. It's been a day to thank a lot of people, and I want to make sure that, that on behalf of the committee, that we've got Reether and her folks at HR that have supported the committee and supported employees. I've been coming here since nineteen eighty-eight for some, one reason or another. So HR's always been great to help and work with all of us. There's a, of course, the NF, what, excuse me, NFP, the consulting group, works with the committee. And then we have a, I guess I lack a better word, a professional from the HR world. In this case, it's Perry Johnson, who chairs our committee. And those people have always worked to guide us and, as a group of amateurs, in get, making sure we look at all the proper things. So on behalf of the committee and myself, thank you all. Good Lord willing, I'll be back next year. And we, with the economy the way it's been, the fact that we were able to garner another reduction in policy premium for all the retired, post, uh, post-sixty-five retirees, that's a good thing, too. So thank you all again for your support. Reether's hiding around the corner. Thank you, Reether. God bless and have a great day.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for the retirees as well.
And Mayor, it's really a good feeling. I know some of the ones around this table, council members, have been here a while. But, but I remember every year when we had to debate health insurance. Public safety folk would be at the podium and employees, you know, Mayor Pro Tim, you know? And, and I'm saying, in the last, I mean, you heard it from the deputy city manager, we haven't had a rate increase. And I hate to even talk about it, because we may have to be here next year, you know? But no rate increase, and, and the retirees would come, and it was always a debate, and they come and they think, they thank you guys. I mean, it's just, it's, there's, it's different. So, but thank you, and, but that's a testament to our HR director and her team and just, you know, taking care of the employees.
Absolutely.
We appreciate you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we've got a street acceptance property formerly known as First Avenue that runs from South Wrightaway Land for Eight...
Motion approved, Counselor Woodson, second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? Please cue the vote. Please register your votes. Okay. Might want to finish explaining four and then also six. In the meantime, though, any, there's a motion, a second for item six. Any discussion? If you can cue it for the vote while the city manager walks through it. Cue it, Bruce. Thank you. Register your votes.
So number six was just a street acceptance, and it was acceptance of a portion of property formerly known as First Avenue that runs from South Wrightaway Land for Eighteenth Street South to North Wrightaway Land for Norfolk Southern Railroad. It is desired to restore... the right of way for First Avenue as a public street for operations and maintenance, and the city will be responsible for this portion, this street acceptance.
Okay, and that was approved.
And then number six is liberty utility. They've got to do some construction work, and they just needed a place to, as they refer to it as lay-down area for their construction, for nearby infrastructure, is what that is, and it's just, I mean, they'll use it, and then when they're done with their project, they won't be using it. Number five, we had already taken care of, and then number seven is the mayor's commission on health donations. Approval is requested.
All right, there's motion, second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue the vote. It's, oh, it's an add-on, I'm sorry, I was looking up. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any vote. All right, it's approved.
Okay, Mayor, we've handled the six ambulance units, and also B, the Emergency Operations Center Technology that was in the PowerPoint presentation.
Motion approved, I am C through L. All right, there's a motion from Council House, second from Council Tucker, to approve the remaining purchases. Are there any that anyone would like pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, can we cue it? You can register your votes. Mr. City Manager, run through them very quickly, please, sir.
C is safety apparel from Low Electric Supply Company, estimated annual contract ninety-six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. The D, janitorial supplies for the Columbus Civic Center and Ice Rink, appro, and that's an amount of estimated forty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. E is storing, transporting, and recycling waste tires as they come into the landfill. L is soft drink concession, Columbus Civic Center and Ice Rink, and I do want to pause here to say that this was a highly competitive process, and, and so, at the end of the day, after, you know, going through this process, at the Columbus Civic Center and Ice Rink, Buffalo Rock did win that request, and so I wanted to just share that. Heavy-duty truck lift for Public Works is G. Intercept High Security Contraband Scanning Systems for Muskogee County Prison is H. I is repair of cherry picker boom lift crane for Public Works. J is wildlife trapping services for Public Works for trapping wild hogs and trapping coyotes. K, direct payment to employee benefit carriers, the various carriers that we use. And L, mobile assessor software for tax assessor's office, and those are the purchases.
All right, go ahead.
I, I do have some updates that I still need to do.
Okay, and, and I'm just gonna ask counselors to make sure everybody's gonna be able to stay here, because we do have an executive session, and we have to have a quorum, be able to go into it.
I won't be, probably.
Is there anybody else that has to leave before the?
Will you do the second session?
We, we can, that's the point. I mean, if we, if we have to go ahead and go into the executive session now.
I'll leave at one.
At one.
Yeah, and, and I think, well, some of those will be short, but others.
All right, we'll, we'll continue, and, and if we look like we're getting close to.
Well, and I'm gonna.
Okay, so, about, if we can get some of those in thirty minutes, then we may, we can do the.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna ask them to go rapidly through. I think that sales tax presentation's gonna be done rather quickly.
Okay.
Because you've heard this before, so.
Did.
Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, because we've already done A and B.
Yep. Madam Clerk, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did not find in my notes the approval of number five, did I?
Well, that was.
Was that taken care of with another reservation?
That was with the ARP.
With the ARP.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy City Manager Hodge, if we would just kinda hit the high points.
So, good afternoon, and this is a presentation you've seen before. We've made some changes to it, so I'll go through it relatively quickly, and if you have any questions, obviously, feel free to stop me as we go. For the special purpose local option sales tax that will be on the ballot in November the second, just as a reminder to those projects that were, promises made, promises kept from the ninety-three and the ninety-nine SPOLOST, just to run through those projects as a reminder of what projects were done with the SPOLOST in the past. The ninety-nine SPOLOST obviously was done in nineteen ninety-nine, ended in two thousand and eight. It was for a total of two hundred and fifty-five million, and those projects included fire stations, fire and EMS, equipment and vehicles, the animal shelter, Liberty District, the Columbus Convention and Trade Center, the Olympic Pools, Lake Oliver, Bull Creek Golf Course, parks and green space, and walking trails. And again, that was ninety-nine, so think about how long ago that was. Over twenty years ago is when these projects happened. Also, the City Services Center, this was one of the projects that was done at the end of that time period, stormwater improvements, the library next door, road improvements, Enterprise Zone, Muskogee Technology Park, some funding for buses, and also Oxbow Meadow Park. Just a few pictures of those projects that have been completed with the nineteen ninety-nine SPOLOST. And then the nineteen ninety-three, which went through two thousand, that was a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars worth of projects. Again, that was the Civic Center, and this was even twenty-five years ago. So, the Civic Center, Public Safety Building, Parks and Recreation, the rec centers were built with those funds, the, the River Walk was from the nineteen ninety-three SPOLOST, as well as Fifty Miles of Sidewalks. So, as we look to the twenty-twenty-one SPOLOST that will be on the ballot November second, the SPOLOST will be for four hundred million. The collection period, if approved, would start in April of twenty-two, estimated to go through March of thirty-one, which is about a ten-year period, but based on our current collection rate, it probably will be closer to eight or nine years. Two hundred million dollars would be issued for general obligation bonds for the Judicial Center, and then all other projects would be handled as pay-as-you-go. So, I'll go through these projects individually rather quickly, and again, if there's questions, please let me know. Economic development, nine million. This is for additional infrastructure and site prep at Muskogee Technology Park. They have a lot of sites at Muskogee Technology Park. This picture on the right shows what they've been able to do with some site preparation. It does help with, when they're showing to site consultants and potential businesses, when they see the site cleared, it does have a different impression. So, this would be for additional site prep, and then also to target redevelopment in South Columbus. Parks and Recreation, forty-eight million. Park improvements at a lot of our parks. As you heard, the accolades today from the Parks and Recreation Department, they do a great job. This would just be to continue to enhance those things. We have a lot of outdated restrooms and playgrounds and amenities throughout our parks that need to be upgraded, pools that are in need of replacement. As you can see, they were on the previous SPOLOST list, and, and they're old, and they've been maintained the best that Parks and Recreation could do, but they just need to replace it's that time. As well as, we wanna look at the pool splash pad combination. These are just some options of what those pools could look like through this SPOLOST. Public safety facility renovations, twenty million. This would be the renovation and upgrade of three stations, which is four, six, and eight. Four is off of Saint Mary's Road, six is off of Brown Avenue, and then Station Eight is off of Whitesville Road, also to replace the fire station off of Lynch Road, and then renovations to the Public Safety Building. And again, that Public Safety Building was built with the ninety-three SPOLOST, so in need of some renovations. And you can see, the facilities are in great condition. Some of them built in the sixties and seventies, so there are some renovations that need to be made at those facilities. Public safety vehicle and equipment at twenty-four million between the Fire Department, Sheriff's Office, and Police Department, and based on Councilor Crabbe's question earlier, again, the SPOLOST does include Fire Department, fire trucks and ambulances, but as the chief presented last week, you know, they have, let's see, thirteen engines and three reserves, average life of nine years. Eight of them need to be replaced now. So, even by replacing five of those through the OLOS Public Safety Reserve, they still have three that need replacement now, and another three that qualify for replacement. So, there is no duplication into what was done through ARP or the Public Safety Reserves, and that's just one example of how there's additional equipment in need in the Fire Department. Sheriff's Office, pursuit vehicles, equipment needed, bomb squad, inmate transport vans, the Police Department, the River Road radio tower is in need of replacement. It's kinda been in the path of two different tornadoes, so it, it needs to be replaced, motorcycles, police pursuit vehicles, and SUVs. The courthouse, which is included in the SPOLOST, this is just a history to show the courthouse on the same site that it currently is on, from eighteen thirty-eight to the building from eighteen ninety-six, to the current building that was built in the nineteen seventies. This is a concept only of a judicial center on that same site, where the, the building would be closer to the Springer and Tenth Street, and the parking structure behind it closer to Ninth Street. So, that judicial center budget is two hundred million for three hundred and ten thousand square feet, with a five to six hundred space parking facility that would house all of the judicial functions of the consolidated government, from Superior State, juvenile, municipal magistrate, probate, the judges, the clerks for those offices, and then those supporting services, the district attorney, public defender, accountability courts, and other court-related functions. Again, this is just a concept that the architects have been working on to show how this building could look, as they have looked at how it could complement the facilities around it, the River Center, the Springer, and what we see in Columbus, Georgia. We've had a lot of questions on the budget, so this just provides a little more detail on that budget, where that came, where we came up with that number, trying to get it to that two hundred million dollar number. Construction alone is eight hundred and eighteen million, and so there's other requirements for construction, including the parking structure, the demolition, the temporary space if that's needed, the design, the project management, and then contingencies. You know, we're several years out. Construction materials are fluctuating a lot, so we wanna make sure that we have a sufficient budget for that facility that will last another a hundred, fifty to a hundred years. Resurfacing in trails, twenty-five million. Stormwater flood abatement, twenty million, and this is based off of the study from Barge, of all of those stormwater facilities that need to be addressed relatively soon. There's a list of about twelve projects that they have been working on. The replacement of the Bull Creek Clubhouse, and also the bridge at Bull Creek, which has been out for several years, and then the renovation of Oxbow Creek Clubhouse, and they also have a bridge that's, cannot be used at this time, so it would also replace that bridge as well. Trade Center, five million. This is to provide additional spaces for their parking structure. That would be coupled with a two thousand and three bond issue for the parking structure at the Trade Center. The Civic Center, five million dollars is, again, you saw that this was, the Civic Center was built with the ninety-three SPOLOST, so it's been about twenty-five years. Time to upgrade the sound system, the LED displays, the video boards, the HVAC system are in need of upgrades. Heavy equipment, fourteen million, and this is really throughout the government mostly, in Public Works, and engineering, and Parks and Rec, mowers, tractors, dump trucks, asphalt trucks, and other equipment. Information technology, five million, just to make sure that our computer equipment stays up to date. The sales tax current rate is eight percent. If the SPOLOST is passed in November, beginning in April, our sales tax would temporarily go to nine percent. The T-SPOLOST is on the ballot for next May, and depending on the outcome of that ballot would determine whether sales tax remains at nine percent if it is passed, or goes back to eight percent if it is not passed. So, it would be a period of nine months where the sales tax would be at a rate of nine percent, and then pending the outcome of the T-SPOLOST vote would determine whether it goes back to eight or continues at nine. Just the history of the, of the different sales tax that we have in Columbus. The school districts has had five different E-SPOLOST. The city has had two SPOLOSTs and proposal of the third one, and then we have a T-SPOLOST in place, and the region has determined that they want to go after a second round of a T-SPOLOST for the region. So, just in, kind of in summary, just as a reminder, that thirty percent of sales tax comes from tourist visitors and neighboring residents. So, it's not the complete burden of Muskogee County residents when you do a sales tax. It does have others from outside our community that contribute to these investments that are made in the community. We're also able to leverage SPOLOST with other federal and state funding, and SPOLOST do produce local jobs and economic development when the projects are, are completed with local contractors. So, just to kinda provide a summary of the sales tax that we've had in the past, between the ninety-three, the ninety-nine, and then the proposed twenty-twenty-one SPOLOST, if it's passed, that would be over eight hundred and twenty-four million dollars worth of investment in our community for capital improvements. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council Woodson?
I really don't have a question on this. I, I just wanna make a request. It just remind me, when we're looking, and I know we have a drawing already about the Government Center, but when we, can we look at that? I mentioned it to the mayor in a conversation we had previously. Council needs an office, a conference room, where we can meet with constituents. Unfortunately, now, we're going to people's homes, or we're meeting at McDonald's, or, and I know we have the city manager's conference room, the mayor's conference room. I know that three-one-one has one, and I know we have a small one back here, but everybody can't get back here. It's isolated, you know, it's difficult to get, and we have to fight what everyone's, not fight, but, you know, look at everyone's schedule. Sorry, my English today is interesting, with their schedules to be able to service. And I think at least we should have along the clerk's office, so that we can reach out to them if we need them, two offices and a conference room, where two council members can be there at the same time. They can call the clerk and say, hey, is it available? I'm coming. I have a constituent to meet, and so we could, because if we meet here, we gotta make, it's a hurdle to get, and then sometimes the constituents don't wanna come to this, you know, this traffic. So, just, just food for thought. I've gone to a couple of places where even my colleague Bruce Huff said, you're going there by yourself, you know? And I said, yeah, and, you know, so I think it's important that we have a place to meet where our constituents, and not be going to McDonald's or, or somewhere to meet with them, or out in, in their homes and stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we can have.
I think we can absolutely make that happen.
Thank you. It's just a request. I was thinking about it, and I did mention, the mayor said he was going to look into it. I just think it's really, really important, and I think the constituents would appreciate it, because they know they can reach us even better, because we're right there with the clerk. If they ask us something, we're right there. We can reach out to the clerk instead of going all over. Thank you. And we can name it after Evelyn. We can name it after Evelyn. We were looking, I have mentioned before, can't remember who, I'm getting senile, that I would like to, you know, name something after Evelyn, because she's been here, you know, over thirty-some-plus years, and we need to find something to name in her honor. And maybe this is it. This is, you know, I don't know, but something, I'm just putting food for thought, you know, I'm planting seeds, but I really wish we did have a meeting space.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, are there other questions, so we can move?
No, sir.
We're going to try and move rapidly.
I get you. We're good. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to give an update on the transportation special purpose local option sales tax and the projects that the Regional Roundtable is considering. But first, just to quickly walk through the current T-SPOSS, the River Walk, which is complete, that was at Bib Mill and City Mills, the Follow Me Trail, which is completed with the T-SPOSS, US Twenty-Seven and Custer was completed with the T-SPOSS. Metra is in progress. They were awarded twenty-two-point-four million out of the T-SPOSS and have been utilizing those funds throughout this ten-year period. The Spider Web Project is under construction. You'll see some construction on the side road with a net, also the temporary roads starting to go in, so that project is moving forward. The Diverging Diamond at Buena Vista and One Eighty-Five, you're seeing construction at that intersection, so this is a project that GDOT's managing for us, and so that project is moving forward under construction. The Conceito Road Interchange, that project is also being managed by GDOT, and that's under design. They're out there doing some right-of-way acquisition at this time. There are two projects that we don't really talk about much, because they're joint projects between Muskogee County and Harris County, and that is on River Road, State Road Two-Nineteen. That one is under construction, being managed by GDOT, as well as US Twenty-Seven North Veterans Parkway. That, again, starts in Muskogee County and goes into Harris County. That one is under design. And this is just the list of the proposed T-SPOSS projects that the Regional Roundtable is considering, how they're going to allocate those projects. These are the ones that have been approved by council and on the list, for a total of three-hundred-and-three million. So those projects are moving forward with the Roundtable, and once that decision is made, that will come back to council for your information. So again, another just summary of the projects and the investment that's been made through a T-SPOSS. The two-hundred-and-one million plus the fifty-seven, that's a portion in Muskogee County, plus the three-hundred-and-three could give us the potential of five-hundred-and-sixty-two million of T-SPOSS if that second round of T-SPOSS is approved by the voters. You know, paving projects, resurfacing, road improvements are done, not only with T-SPOSS, but we also utilize our paving fund, OLOS infrastructure, federal and state grants to handle our transportation needs as well, which is not included in this number.
The only thing I'll add is that the Executive Committee of the T-SPOSS, of the Roundtable is meeting again next week and should have the finalized project list, or be very, very close to having what they're going to present to the full Roundtable for them to vote and approve it. There'll be a couple of public meetings that they're looking to try to make virtual, do a hybrid, so that the public will be able to listen to what's going on. But I know we should, everybody should know by now that Pop Barnes is the Chair of the River Valley Regional Commission this year, so his leadership on this project and others has been pretty solid.
Awesome. Okay, Mayor, if there are, yeah, congratulations. Yeah, Pop, yes, sir. If there are no other questions, we're going to go ahead and call Shelley Hall, Director of Victim Services, for just an update. I think she'll share some things that we probably don't talk about much.
Counselor, one quick second. Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, I'm really concerned that it is now twelve-twenty, and we've got some people who have to leave. We did not take action on a number of items on the clerk's agenda last time. I know they're back now. If we lose a majority because of the length of the executive session, I'm really concerned. I'm concerned about the folks that have been sitting here all day, all morning, trying to make their presentation, but I really think that we need to handle the clerk's agenda so that...
Yeah.
We...
Right. What we'll do is after Shelley's presentation, we can go straight to the clerk's agenda. We can call for an executive session, and we can try to get back.
I just don't want us to lose our...
I think we're losing two. We should give us seven left.
Okay.
And Mayor, I don't think the clerk's agenda is going to be long.
I don't think so either, but it's important that we deal with it.
And Shelley, is that...
Oh, as long as, I have an appointment at two, so as long as I'm here by then, I'm fine.
So Mayor, we could go to the clerk and then come back to Shelley.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Thomas.
Thank you.
We'll do that, then. We ask the indulgence of those that still are, have yet to make it a presentation. So, Madam Clerk, you want to hit your button, and we'll go to your agenda. Here you go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution to council on November second, twenty-twenty-one proclamation.
Motion, second, approve, canceling the proclamation, center of event on November second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's, that's approved.
One, two, three, second.
All right, there's a motion, second, approve resolutions on item two and three, excluding Counselor, excusing Counselor Thomas, and also Counselor Barnes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second.
Motion, second, is received. The minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are received.
We'll approve a resolution, I don't consider...
Okay, so motion approved, motion and a second, approve a resolution excusing Counselor Garrett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's, that's approved.
Next, Ms. Mayor, we have board appointments. We have the mayor's appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. We have the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners, the seat of Mary Ann Ridgster.
I'll bring that back to you on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. For the Housing Authority of Columbus, we have the seat of Stacy, Tiffany Stacy, which is a resident member. She's eligible to serve another term. We have not confirmed with her if she's interested in continuing her service. We also have the seat of late Charles Alexander. Mr. Mayor, you are nominating Linda Hadley.
Yes, ma'am.
And she may be confirmed.
Motion, second, confirm Ms. Hadley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. She's approved.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation for the Board of Family and Children's Services. We have the seat of Pastor Johnny Flakes III, who was nominated.
Second.
Motion, second, approve Pastor Flakes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's approved.
Next, for the Board of Water Commissioners, we have retired Colonel Clint W. Cox, who was nominated to fill that expired term.
Motion, second, approve retired Colonel Cox. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Ms. Mayor, I did just want to state, Ms. Sharon Bond requested that her name be withdrew from consideration on this board due to some personal reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have council district seat appointments that may be confirmed for this meeting, the Youth Advisory Council.
Second.
Motion, confirm Mr. Bowman and Ms. Rice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Historic and Architectural Review Board, we have the seat of Shannon Smallman, who has resigned. The chairperson, Kathy Williams, is recommending Fran Carpenter for...
I'll sit back. Give me a quick...
And you can nominate her.
The nomination can be made today.
I have nominated.
Okay, Counselor Woodson has made that nomination. Next, for the Hospital Authority, I did want to state very briefly, read from a prepared statement with regards to the Hospital Authority, as well as the Medical Center Hospital Authority, just to speak a little bit with regards to the difference in the two. In accordance with Article Four of Chapter Seven of Title Thirty-One of the OCGA, the Hospital Authority's law, there was created in and for each county and municipal corporation of the state a public body, corporate and politic, politic, to be known as the Hospital Authority. The City of Columbus established two such authorities, the Hospital Authority of Columbus, as well as the Medical Center Hospital Authority. The difference between the two relates to the facilities for which they oversee. The Hospital Authority of Columbus oversees the operation of the Orchard View Rehab and Skilled Nursing Center, the Ridge Crest Rehab and Skilled Nursing Center, Muskogee Manor and Rehabilitation Center, and the Muskogee Home Health. The Medical Center Hospital Authority oversees the operation of the Medical Center, currently known as the Piedmont Columbus Regional Midtown Family Medicine Center.
Thank you for doing that.
For the Hospital Authority, we have the seats of Ernest Smallman, Mike Welch, as well as Dr. John Kingsbury. All are eligible to serve another term. We submit three, the council submits three nominees for each of the vacancies. Did you just want to submit each of the three names for each of the three seats? We will submit these nominees to the Hospital Authority for them to make their selection. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we have the seats of David Goldberg, Oz Roberts, Dr. William Kendall, Fran Flucker, Orlean Bachman, and Larry Derby. Counselor Thomas has nominated Mr. William R. Bandi to succeed Mr. Larry Derby, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Medical Center Hospital Authority of Columbus, we have the seats of Brenda Duramus, Susan McWherter, John Hargrove, and James Cross. All are eligible to serve another term of office. However, Mr. Cross does not desire reappointment. The council submits, once again, three nominees. These will go to the Medical Center Hospital Authority. Counselor Thomas. Thank you. And for the seat, we did want to add the nomination for the seat of James Cross, Ms. Afna Aurora, to the list. Okay, thank you. And we will, we will submit these to the Medical Center Hospital Authority. For the Tree Board, we have the seat of Frank Tommy and Troy Keller, that are open for nominations. And then, Mr. Mayor, did we want to address the public agenda, the event, because that is all I have on my agenda.
Okay. And we'll bring Mr. Bruton up after our presentations from those that are on the city manager's agenda.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, with that, we'll move on to Shelley Hall. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely, no problem. All right.
Just touch it.
Does it come up here? Oh. Awesome.
I think you've got your remote clicker there.
Okay, clicker, got it. Good afternoon, Mayor Henderson, City Manager Hughley, council members, and everyone in attendance. I'd like to thank Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge for inviting me here today to speak to you about what our office does for crime victims. My name is Shelley Hall. I'm Director of Victim Services for the Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit's District Attorney's Victim Witness Program. Next. All right. So I'm going to very quickly give you an overview, and then talk about Crime Victims' Bill of Rights, and from there, talk about our advocates, some of the services that we provide, and I'll wrap it up covering the Georgia Crime Victims' Compensation Program. Most of you are aware that there are one-hundred-and-fifty-nine counties in Georgia, and forty-nine of those, that's, we have judicial circuits are formed of forty-nine, and each circuit elects a district attorney, and then the six counties make up our Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit. What can be confusing to our victims is that here in Columbus, there are two victim witness serving agencies, and that's because we have a Solicitor General here. The Solicitor General is going to prosecute misdemeanors, and the district attorney will prosecute all felonies and then attached felonies in Muskogee County. And now, moving on to the Crime Victims' Bill of Rights. Everything in the Bill of Rights is going to be covered in Title Seventeen, Chapter Seventeen of the Code Book. And this code was all enacted in nineteen ninety-five, and the law stated that all crime victims will receive notification throughout the entire criminal justice process. This may have been a law, but there was no remedy for victims who believed that their rights were violated. Marcy's Law came about in two thousand and nineteen as a constitutional amendment, and this enhanced the crime, the prior crime victims' rights. So now there's a recourse for crime victims to take. Marcy's Law also defined who a victim was, and that is any individual against whom a crime has allegedly been perpetrated, including delinquent acts, which is juvenile court. The other thing that Marcy's Law did was define who, what crimes are covered, and this is a broader definition. It's all crimes against or involving the person, to include felony property crimes. So the specific rights are listed. I'm not going to read them all, but all of this information is in the packet that you received. The most important right is the last one. It's a newer right, and I want to make sure to point that out, because this is the recourse that has been put into the amendment, that any victim that believes their right has been violated, they can now ask the judge to stop all proceedings and hold a motion. And they'll have a hearing, the judge will have a motion. This will bog down the whole system, so it's very important that we don't violate a criminal, a crime victim's rights. Now let's talk about victim advocacy and some of the services that we provide. These are just some of the services. Again, that's in your packet. Our victim advocates wear many hats, and this is our mission to serve the needs of all crime victims. Basically, we try to address any concern that stems from the victimization. We never turn a victim away if we can't help. Our goal is to find someone in the community or the state that can help them. Some of our newer programs, due to the increased availability of federal grant funding, we have been fortunate to have experienced substantial growth over the years. What started as a one-person office is now a successful team of fourteen certified victim advocates. We have two early victim notification advocates who reach out to victims as soon as the crime occurs, often before the offender's first appearance at recorder's court. We have a post-adjudication team who stays in touch with the crime victim long after the case is closed. They inform the victim of the offender's status and the movements throughout the prison sentence. Some of the victims that we're in contact with, we have been with them for literally decades. We also created a voca-funded therapy program and have been recognized as the state's pilot program. This benefit offers counseling to any victim who may be ineligible for the state's compensation coverage. We have a crime victims' compensation specialist who is dedicated to help the compensation claims throughout the entire circuit. So very quickly, let's get into, a little deeper into compensation. Crime Victims' Compensation is a state-run program with its own independent system of determining eligibility. Funded with zero... Funded with zero tax dollars, all of the funds in this fund, all of the, they come from fines and costs of federal criminal penalties. The purpose is to help innocent victims of violent crime with out-of-pocket expenses directly related to an eligible victimization. The program pays outstanding bills or reimburses those bills directly, and there will be an independent investigation by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, to determine that eligibility. Some of the stipulations on how a crime victim is eligible, the total award will not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's from all of the categories that we'll get into on the next slide. However, we've just been told that beginning next summer, hospitals will be considered paid in full when there's an approved claim. A trip to the emergency room for a shooting victim can be above three hundred thousand dollars, so, we're allowed fifteen thousand dollars, they run out of those funds very quickly, so, now we can know the victim will not be hunted down by collection agencies to get them to pay. The next thing is the payer of last resorts. Compensation will only be paid after all of their sources are exhausted, such as insurance, workman's comp, other benefits like that. There is no money upfront, therefore, it's difficult to cheat this program because they only reimburse legitimate bills or pay the biller directly. Eligibility is going to depend on a few things, but not the outcome of prosecution or even an indictment. It's based on the police report and what that police report contains. The crime does need to be reported within seventy-two hours unless good cause is shown. The victim must also be innocent. For instance, a dealer who is killed during a drug deal gone bad is not innocent, therefore not eligible for these funds. The claim must be filed within three years, and the claimant must be able to pass Criminal Justice Coordinating Council's background check. This is where our specialists can be helpful, because if the crime victim knows that their background is going to disqualify them, we can have a different family member, a claimant, pay the bill and file that claim. It's not cheating the system, it's just ensuring that our victims have the best chance of receiving the funds. These are the allowable expenses. Once eligibility is established, which is a lengthy process in itself, the program may cover lost wages or loss of support, up to ten thousand dollars, funeral expenses up to six thousand, medical and dental up to fifteen, mental health expenses up to three thousand, and it's important that the family understands that multiple members can be eligible for that counseling program. Crime scene cleanup, up to fifteen hundred dollars, and keep in mind that all of these cannot exceed twenty-five thousand. One other thing I think it's very important for all of you to know is that there is an officers' initiative as part of this compensation program. This funding is available to all first responders who fall victim to violent crime while in the course of their duties. Ten thousand dollars is given to the family of a first responder who is killed in the line of duty. Family members may also be eligible for counseling, and we rarely have first responders apply for this, but we urge them to file because the program will pick up unforeseen out-of-pocket expenses. For example, one officer was injured in aggravated assault incident, and although the city picked up all of his workman's comp and his medical bills, he was out of his prescription sunglasses, prescription glasses, and CJCC replaced those because it was a medical device. We encourage everyone to open a claim, because once a claim is open, it stays open until it's paid. So, if their condition worsens, they have coverage available. That is basically all I have, so I will answer any questions if anyone has any.
We've got a few. Counselor Woodson.
Yes, I just have a question. Like, the one shooting where it was an innocent victim that got shot, does your agency go to them and let them know that this is available, or they have to reach out to you?
No. Well, if you know of somebody and they haven't been in contact with us, I'm not going to say there are people that fall through the cracks. We do our best. Every case that comes through Recorder's Court, we have advocates there, and that is usually where we capture them, but there's many police reports there where there's no arrest, so we also have to be careful and really try to get ahold of every victim that's out there. We do that through outreach, through, you know, things like this where we're going to pass that information on to you and you can pass it on to constituents.
Well, maybe I need to be a little bit more clear. There was a shooting and an innocent person got shot.
Right.
They've had to be in the hospital twice. Their parents are concerned about that debt that was accumulated. Would they be eligible for some of this funding?
Absolutely, and that's where our advocates, anytime there is a victim crime, we reach out to them, and I can't think of any, you know, there are some instances where we didn't get them, whether it's because the arrest didn't happen early, but the majority of them, we do a really good job of letting the victim know what is available for them.
Well, this person wasn't arrested or anything, there was a shooting in uptown.
But it's a violent crime, and that's what we address all violent crimes.
I think the key is you make him reach out to them and put them together with Shelley's office and see where it goes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for having me.
Thank you so much.
Counselor, hang on, we got one more, Counselor Tucker.
I'm gonna be real quick, and I know we're trying to, I have plenty of questions, but because we got to get in this executive session. So, in reference to the funeral, kind of falling up with Mimi, so, with the murders, in reference to the funeral expenses, do you all reach out to, like, the young lady that was shot in?
Yes, I believe our advocates have already been in touch with that family, so, and yes, we reach out to them throughout the circuit. We don't try to invade their, right at the very beginning, but within seventy-two hours.
Okay.
We reach out to them.
That's always a question that I get as a counselor from the citizens, is what are we doing to help those individuals who are killed, because I think I got like twelve in my district.
Right.
So far, so, you know, they.
And anytime you have a question, if they're receiving services, you absolutely have them, but you can call too. You can call us and make sure that we haven't missed anybody. We do our best, but we're very outnumbered with what's going on, so, but our goal is to reach every crime victim in the circuit.
Okay, so, I call you or?
Yes, you may.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley, thank you. Thank you for what you do as well.
Okay. Next, Mayor, I am going to call on Metra and then the City Resource Center update and the comprehensive camera update I'm going to delay, so we'll hear from Metra and then we'll hear Yard Waste.
Okay.
Hey, Robert.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you all for giving us just a little bit of your time today to talk about what we've got coming here at Metra, October fifth. And we'll be very brief, we're going to go through this, we'll give you the condensed version of what's going on, and we hope that each of you have packages, so, if you have questions that we're not able to answer today, please feel free to reach out to me, call our office, and we'll be able to answer those questions. But we were, we are really super excited to be able to share today two different, well, an activity, annual event, Communities in Motion, which will happen on October fifth at our transfer center. We did not have it on last year because of COVID, but during this event, we have some really super excited technologies, some state-of-the-art technology that we want to share with the public, and so that's the reason why we really wanted to kind of share this with you today, because it's information that's going to benefit the public. So, I won't delay, I'll ask Robert Sheridan to come up and go through his presentation pretty quickly, and then I'll wrap up with any questions that you all might have.
Thank you all for having me this afternoon. As Director Evans was saying, I'm Robert Sheridan, I'm with Metro Transit System, I work as a compliance officer. I'm also the Senate Leader of City Managers' Millennial Roundtable, so, for the sake of brevity, I'm going to be going through this pretty quickly. So, just a quick overview, we're going to be rolling out on October fifth, our Integrated Transit System, or ITS, and what that is, is basically twenty-first century technology that integrates with itself to make trips with Metra much more convenient and much more accessible. So, there are public-facing capabilities, which are capabilities that the public interacts with day-to-day, and there are also private-facing capabilities, which are capabilities that Metra interacts with on a daily basis. And for the sake of brevity, I'll just touch on the public-facing capabilities. So, first and foremost, the ITS will allow our customers to track Metra's fixed route buses in real time using either a custom smartphone app called Metro Mobile, or, if you don't have a smartphone, you can track it via metrocolumbus.com. Both options have a map that you can view all of our buses on the routes. Second, it provides free and secure onboard public Wi-Fi for all Metro buses, that's fixed route and our paratransit dollar-ride buses. Third, it provides trip planning capabilities, which basically answers the question that our customers have, how do I get from point A to point B using Metra? Well, the trip planner tells you that. We will have on our website a widget, and the top image is what the widget will look like on the website, and you just click your point of origin and point of destination, and it will tell you what stops to use, what routes to use, and how long the trip will be. You can also use Google Maps directly, there's a transit option, all of our information is now available on Google Maps, including all of our bus stop locations, so you can get directions that way. It also has automatic passenger counting capabilities, which will give live estimates as to how full a bus is before it gets to your stop, and that's just a screenshot of what it looks like. And here are some of the private-facing capabilities that Metra staff will be using. It has fleet health monitoring, which gives a live fleet health status of all of our fixed route buses, and it also has computer-aided dispatch capabilities, which allow our dispatch to interact with bus operators, including signing them in and out, if they're signed in incorrectly or changing out a destination sign. Are there any questions?
Name of the app, again.
Oh, it's Metro Mobile. It's not currently available at the moment, but it will be by October fifth.
Glad you told me that, I was sitting here trying to find it.
Yeah, so your kickoff is October fifth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Robert, congratulations on surviving interning with the city manager, working your way up to a.
Former intern in my office.
Yeah.
And I remember meeting you, you were incoming mayor.
That's right, you're doing a great job.
Yes. Any questions of Metro Director Rosa Evans or Robert Sheridan?
No, sir.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we're just going to go briefly over the CARES Act funding.
Okay, you want to mention the funding, okay.
Yes.
You want to do that? We always like to hear about the money that we're getting that didn't cost us.
Thank you again, and I want to say a special thank you to Robert. He took this project on practically by himself, so, I mean, we did have some help, we had a couple of staff, some folk from our IT department, Brian Lackey, Michael Burns, thank you so much for assisting Robert, but, he, when I tell you, he jumped in when this funding became available, and he took ownership. So, it was funded by the CARES funding that we received in two thousand twenty, six-point-nine million that we received from the federal government, and of course, they'll tell you pretty much what you can spend the money on. So, with that funding, we purchased eight thirty-foot buses. We will not be getting the thirty-five-foot buses with this funding. We purchased, four of those eight will be here this month. The remaining four will be in January. Seven new paratransit, the dollar-ride buses, we've received those. Funding for operating materials, PPE, things like that, when customers get on the bus, we make sure they have masks. Decontamination contracted out with companies that come in and decontaminate, as well as our staff decontaminating. And of course, this ITS, eight hundred and sixty thousand startup and a hundred thousand annual cost for, to keep this system going. I think the big piece for our customers is the Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi on every single bus, that is something that, that is, you know, that is phenomenal. So, again, I'll wrap up by saying on the last slide, did I miss it? I'm sorry.
That was.
Okay, here we go. October fifth, part of Communities in Motion, we will have the Health Department there to provide vaccinations on-site. They came to our property in May, and they're going to be back again, so we invite you all to come out and enjoy and participate with us. Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robert.
Have a good day.
They've gotten a lot of federal money over the last year and a half or so. Mayor, the last update will be yard waste, bulk waste update, we've got Director Mike Criddle here to do that update.
Good afternoon. I don't sing, so you won't have to worry about that, no one wants to hear that. Do have a very brief update, and I will be brief, on the situation with yard waste and bulk pickup. It's getting better, that's the, that's the good news. Maybe not fast enough. We did bring our private haulers that came from this group, from City Manager, thank you. We've got private haulers, we started that process, the application process on August fourteenth, by the sixteenth, we had the first contractor on the street. We now have thirteen that are out there working every day. Through Friday, I don't have, I didn't have numbers through yesterday, but through Friday, three hundred nine point eight five tons, that's six hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred pounds ran across the scales at the landfill from the streets of Columbus. That is a lot of bulk waste got picked up. That's why, and it's mostly, it's your, it's your mattresses, appliances, couches, things like that, and then naturally, they're going for the bigger piles, they're going for the weight, I would too. If I was a private hauler going for that, I'd go for the big piles and the big weight, and that's what they're doing. But that's what we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of activity every day. There's a couple of them that have probably done a third of this, these guys are out there hustling. They are hustling, that's good news. So, it's a lot of waves removed from the streets of Columbus, thank goodness. Yard waste is caught up. Yard waste is caught up, I'm going to say that again, it is caught up. Yes. It doesn't necessarily mean that you, if you're on a Monday route, you get picked up on Monday, but you will get picked up by Tuesday or Wednesday. We're servicing every house in Columbus on a seven-day basis now, every house is on a seven-day basis, and that's a, that's a big accomplishment. A lot of that was the contractor came on, Amways came on, geared up very quickly, did a great job for us, is still doing a great job, they've got ten routes every day now, and the CCG crews have the remainder of the routes. The, the thirtieth of this month is still the cutoff for the free dumping at the landfills for yard waste and bulk waste, and we're obviously evaluating that as we go. As I said, they geared up very quickly, started on the twenty-third with their second set of five routes. They've got, again, ten crews on the streets every day, and have done a tremendous job for us, we appreciate what they've done. One thing I do want to highlight, and I'll make sure that we're still on the same page, bulk waste, besides what the contractors have picked up, we're still behind, the CCG is still behind, and that's primarily green waste, because they're not picking up green waste because of the weight. I get that, they're going after the high, the high-weight, high-value items, and I would do the same thing, like I said. We've still got a tremendous shortage of drivers and of labor in every other division except sanitation. We're fourteen drivers short as of today, that's a lot, that takes out basically all of our bulk waste fleet, so we get bulk waste drivers on Wednesdays and Saturdays primarily, when they're not running other trucks. when they're not running other trucks. But for instance, today, I've got every supervisor that I've got driving a truck. I don't have anybody supervised, because we got, we got them all driving. The chart you're looking at there is our daily inmate shortage. If you take out what we need for sanitation, we just took this out of the equation completely, and that, the, the orange bar across the top is what we need every day, somewhere right around three-hundred is two ninety-six actually is our daily average, what we require, what we would need, and we're getting about seventy-five. So you can see, that's still very, very painful as far as right-of-waste cutting, litter pickup, storm drain cleanouts, any other function within, within public works that we use inmate labor for, which is almost all of them, we are still a couple hundred short on, on labor. And that hurts. That does hurt. We're, we're, you know, we're still working on innovative ways to get caught up, but I appreciate everybody's patience to work through this, because it is tough. I, I reiterate again, fourteen drivers short. All other positions besides drivers in public work, we're forty-four people short. So we are very short of people right now. We can't hire people. We just can't hire them. If we see two or three of them come in for an interview, we all are ecstatic, because they're, they're just not out there. Nobody's applying for the jobs, and we're not, we're not able to hire folks at the moment. We're getting by with what we, with what we have at the moment. And with that, I'll, questions? Hope to have you quick.
Counselor Thomas?
We have the no-charge yard waste at Pine Grove. Can you, can you give some kind of a ballpark idea about, has this increased the, the material that has been brought in? If it has, is it a dramatic increase or a little increase or?
It's been almost double. What we've seen from the, from the normal, when they were tipping fees to when they're not tipping fees, our, our volume has doubled.
And this is scheduled to remain in effect until the end of the month. Do we need to think about extending that?
We, we are thinking about that now. We're, we're going to kind of continue to evaluate that tonnage and see how we go towards the end of the month, if it tails off or not. And also look at the streets, you know, how are we doing? Are we, have we been able, have our private contractor been able to pick this up, or are we able to pick it up and we'll evaluate that? But yes, ma'am, we'll certainly reevaluate as we get closer to the end of the month.
This seems to be a fairly successful program.
Yes, ma'am. It is, has been.
Counselor Tucker?
I wanted to say thank you, Director Cridle. I know we, it's been hard. I'm just going to say.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
It has been a headache for, for you, the City Manager, the Mayor, and all of us on council. I will say that list that you gave us, that provided how many, I think we asked for the bulk waste tickets, how many we had per district?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a good outlook, that way we can kind of track, you know, whether or not, not whether or not, but how quickly we are kind of taking those tickets down. And also, thank you, because somebody called me today, Pastor Valerie Thompson, who sat in his seat, called me, she said, thank you, thank you, Counselor Tucker, because they just came and picked it up, and they've been dumping in, on one street, I got a hotspot where they dump every time you clean it up. Within days, they, they dump right back in what, what my church, one of our deacons did was he went in the trash. I don't advise anybody to do that, but he went in the trash and he found some prescription pills.
Yeah, we'll do it. We, our staff will do it.
Yeah.
Go through the, and identify, yes.
Yeah, so he, he found an individual, and I think, I don't know who went to the home.
Well, he, did he, he should have reported it to special enforcement?
And we did. I had, I called Tia and asked her what that process was, but the lady said, so this is, this was something that happened. It was a senior citizen. She paid somebody to pick up the trash, because it was on, on her street.
Mm-hmm.
And they dumped it. Instead of just driving it, I mean, we live in district, you know we live on Steam and Road.
Yeah.
Instead of just going further up and dumping it, you don't have to pay. They dumped it on the street.
We see that every day. And if, if I may, I mean, it's, Mayor, it's really ridiculous. You know, on Fair Oaks Drive, they clean it up, and then I go through the next day. How about this, there's a couch and a toilet, I mean, just in the ditch on Fair Oaks. I, it's just, I don't get it. It just, so we have ridiculous situations.
And this goes back to see something, say something. Somebody had to have seen that get dumped there.
Yeah, so that's why, you know, just reiterating what Counselor Thomas said, the tipping fees are being waived until September thirtieth. We are looking to extend that. It's no need to dump. If you have a vehicle, a truck, take it to the dump. It's no cost. Don't dump it on the street. The energy that you take, the dumping on the street, you can drive less than two miles and dump it at the city landfill. It makes no sense. And if we do find identification or something that points who dumped it, you will be charging. I think, City Manager, what, what's the fine? Is it a thousand?
It's a thousand dollars.
We've asked for a thousand dollars.
Thousand, so just reiterating that.
And they'll get an opportunity to help us clean up.
That's right.
There you go. Oh, yeah.
We're putting the work.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Counselor Graham?
Thank you for your progress. Would it help you if, say, if people were putting bulk items out onto the street to call three-one-one and, and let them know that it's been put out so that you can put it on your list?
It does, because it's a very large city, so it does help that, because we, and then we take them, and the order is received.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes what I have today.
Okay.
And we did, Deputy City Manager Goodwin did pass out the PowerPoint on the Comprehensive Cam, uh, camera project with projected timelines, and then I think Counselor Tucker had asked for projected timeline, so.
What we'll do, at, at the request of the counselor, we'll go ahead and, and go into executive session, and once we come out, if we could give. Yes, they're, they're here. They're just, they're just not seated, but we'll, but once we go into executive session, then we'll come back out and give just a quick synopsis, highlight the timeline, and then we can bring the full presentation back in two weeks.
Sure.
And we had somebody sign up, but I think we wore that poor fellow out. All right, there's a motion to go into executive session to discuss, to discuss land acquisition, disposal, and potential litigation. All right, there's, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, we, we were in executive session. We discussed potential acquisition of land and potential litigation. No votes were taken. And we are going to have a very quick update, preliminary update on the camera committee, and we'll have the, the, the full presentation in two weeks. Deputy City Manager?
Okay, thank you. Yes, just to give you a very brief preliminary update on the project timeline for the Comprehensive Camera, this is, again, a preliminary timeline that we have. The committee met first on August the seventeenth. The committee, of course, is made up of a number of our departments and those that have cameras within their departments. September the ninth, we met with our camera contractor, Adaptusolve, just to talk about the, the needs and the options that the departments are looking at. September the thirteenth through November the first, we will have the contractor to audit all of the cameras and make a recommendation based on options and needs that was discussed in that meeting with those departments. November the second, we will have the contractor to present the findings and their recommendations back to the committee. November the third through the fifth, there will be a departmental review of those recommendations by the contractor, and the department then on between the eighth and the ninth of November will then, will provide feedback from the department representatives back to the contractor if those, if that's needed. November the tenth through the eleventh, we'll communicate the department review if needed, and then November the eleventh and the twelfth, we'll discuss the recommendations with the City Manager and the Finance Director. We will look if all goes well, if he concurs. November the twenty-third, we will have the purchase on the City Man's agenda for council approval. Again, all of this is going to be based on what information the contractor comes back with. We're looking at, they're, they're taking a high dive on every camera within the city, internal and external. And so we hope to bring that back. Our intent, of course, is to make sure that we get the type cameras that we need in order to ensure that there are, there are no missteps, making sure that all public safety, general government, all of our departments have what we need to make sure that public safety can access those cameras whenever they need to, and then, of course, everything is networked together. So that's just very briefly.
Well, thank you. And, you know, we've been working on cameras, I know, for a year and a half, and of course, the big struggle initially is where to find the money. And going through COVID, it was very tough to obligate funds when we weren't clear whether or not the revenue was going to be there. And, but yeah, we've, we've been, we've been focusing on these cameras for a while, and it's a big job, trying to make sure you've got the number of cameras out there, and we have a good understanding of how they're interconnecting and how they're working, so.
Yes.
Counselor Tucker?
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. I just want to tell you, thank you for coming back with the timeline, and we know exactly what the Mayor just mentioned, that it's important, especially with, you know, the numbers that we have in reference to our law enforcement officers and the incidents that we're having in our parks, that this is going to be, and also the dumping that we mentioned.
Absolutely.
That this is going to be something great for our city to help with our department heads.
Looking forward to bringing that recommendation back.
Multiple uses. I think, I think, I don't know that it's going to prevent criminal activity, but it will certainly help us to resolve those issues very quickly, which may ultimately be a deterrent somewhere down the road. All right, and before we leave, I want to, I want to ask Counselor Woodson to talk a little bit about the Tri-City Latino Festival that's occurring this Saturday. And I got to tell you, if you haven't been, you need to go. This is a, as she's said many times, it's a multicultural event. It's not just to celebrate, to celebrate Latino heritage. This is to bring people from all over Phoenix City, Fort Benning, Columbus, surrounding areas together, and it's going to have all kinds of stuff. So Counselor Woodson?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say to you and Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin and Rob Lender at the Civic Center, thank you. This festival will not be possible without your support and the support of some of my colleagues, Huff, Judy, John, for supporting the festival. It's very important to us. But the reason the Mayor wanted me to go through it is because we're doing something very unique this year. We will have a job fair. The city of Columbus will have a job fair at the Tri-City Latino Festival. There are so many people needing jobs. Well, while you go watch the football game, or while you go watch the car show, or you go eat some Latin food, you can go and apply for a job and be able to sustain your family. And second, with the, with the vac, we will also have a vaccination area with lots of people concerned with COVID. We wanted to make sure that that was available for anyone that wished to be vaccinated. We are following the CDC guidelines for the festival to try to make everyone feel comfortable and secure. The event is free to the public. The only thing we ask, don't bring a cooler, because the merchants have to, the vendors have to make their money. Bring a chair and umbrella, and from the bottom of the heart, from our Latino community and the six people that put this honor, we can be more grateful to the city that we live in, to the people that have come out and support us and understand that this is one time only that the Latino community feels that they can come together with everyone and everyone can understand our culture, because within our culture, there's twenty-one other different languages, even though we all sound the same. So in behalf of the Tri-City Latino Association, we say thank you, Mayor, for all your support.
Uh, we're looking forward to it.
It starts at noon. The opening ceremony, which the Mayor for Benny and Phoenix City will be speaking, that will be at two o'clock. And then from noon to twelve is Spanish and English music, and then after five o'clock, I'm sorry, from twelve to five is Spanish and English music, local artists and, and dancers, performers of different countries and stuff. And then after five will be Latin artists that have won Grammy before. This year, we're doing a big event for the Mexican community. So it's going to be lots of fun, and we appreciate you. Your words were beautiful at the press conference. You had us all in tears, because, you know, Mayor, sometimes I don't think you realize your, your words, how they touch people, because at the conference, as you spoke, I saw how people were looking at each other and looking at you, how unity is such important to you, and we couldn't be where we are if it wasn't for you. I truly appreciate it. And Lisa, you're the angel, you're the godmother of the festival. You've always been and you always will be. Thank you.
I like that, godmother.
She's my godmom.
She'll make you an offer you can't refuse.
That's right. Thank you, sir, for this opportunity.
Counselor Tucker?
I just wanted to tell Counselor Woodson, thank you for bringing this cultural event, and with both of us being military and being stationed overseas, and we know the importance of this and how it does, the diversity brings us together. And then I just want to say happy Hispanic Heritage Month as well.
Thank you.
Which officially kicks off tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
So happy Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm a proud Latina American.
All right, any further business needs to come before the council? Entertained a motion to adjourn? Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.